Boulevard, two-stage, Route 22, up-ramp at Golden West Street.
The city of Westminster received a $2.76 million grant and is now unveiling its newest recreational amenity.
Three, two, one.
So you'll see us out here a little bit more now that this bike path is open. And I hope to see community members out here being active, the beautiful weather we have here in Southern California. It's great when you see kids out here being able to ride their bicycles with their families, walking their dogs here in the bike lane. It's just great to see that.
This street improvement project will serve commuters and the community, and cyclists are...
The podiums really wide.
I know it's... What is the X?
Five-five.
These are seven.
Five-six.
I heard. I heard.
It looks really low.
I actually feel pretty good about this. Makes me feel pretty good about my 5'7" stature. I'm like, "That's about how the world was built for me." I actually feel pretty good about this. Makes me feel pretty good about my five seven stature. I'm like, that's about the time the world was built for me.
Welcome to our special meeting today. We are going to talk about strategic planning workshop. And today is October sixth. The time now is nine thirty-five. I would like to call to the order for the meeting. Would you please do the call?
Thank you. Mayor Win?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
I'm here.
District one, Councilwoman Fan West?
Fan West here, but I noticed my Trump flag is missing, but thank you.
District three, Councilmember Win?
Here.
And District four, Councilmember Win? Mayor, you have a quorum with District four, Councilmember Win absent.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to ask you to stand for pledge of allegiance and invocation. Pledge of allegiance by Vice Mayor Manzo and invocation by Councilmember Mark Win.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, we ask for guidance and directions as matters of importance are discussed this morning. Made a decision made here to be the benefits of all citizens of Westminster. Amen.
Thank you Vice Mayor Manzo and also Councilmember Mark Win for their pledge of allegiance and invocation. Next, we'll talk about oral communication, but before we do that, my apology for the delay. Welcome back to the council chamber meeting. Council chamber here and it's very beautiful. Thanks for all the work. Although we have a technical problem today, a little technical problem, we don't have the screen here for the council, so we are going with the paper. With the presentation put up. So at this time, I would like to open up for oral communication for strategic planning workshop only. Please, if you want to address anything else, wait until another meeting. This is the special meeting for strategic planning workshop only. So at this time, open for oral communication. Madame Cook?
Thank you. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any items on the agenda. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the city council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record. We have two speakers today. First speaker is Tony Bowie, followed by Terry Rains. Tony Bowie?
I just want to remind again that this, today is special meeting for strategic planning workshop only. If any comments not related to this topic, I will stop. And now you have three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members, City Attorney, not here, and City Manager. I'm Tony Bowie. Formerly, I was Planning Commissioner and was a measure-wide committee chairman. I came here, first of all, and congratulations on you getting together on today for planning, strategic planning. Strategic planning is very important for the city. If you plan based on three principles, transparency, accountability, and responsibility, without it, the city will crumble, will not survive. And as a former planning commissioner, I'm proud that I did not resign or fired by the mayor on item nine point two last week on September twenty-four. He tried hardly to fire me on two positions.
You need to concentrate on what?
Yes, this is, this something is about transparency, Mayor. Transparency because you didn't bring the agenda to all the people. And responsibility because you do not find anything wronging to me. That's why the city, at the city meeting, all of American people, they know it, you are doing wrongly, wrongfully. And therefore, they do not support your agenda item nine point one last September twenty-four meeting. These are three things: transparency, responsibility, and accountability. You are not accountable to your action. You hold your high position.
This is personal attack, and I don't take that at this meeting. You can wait into the next meeting and talk about it, and you can talk all you want, but this meeting is only for the strategic planning workshop, please.
I agree. Planning need a lot of thinking, need a lot of cooperating. All of you there have to cooperate. All of you have to help him to stand straight, rather than colluding with other people and making our city going down the drain. I tell you the truth. That is why I come here, and I invite all of you to a town hall meeting that I will have on this Thursday at eleven o'clock at Mer- Merriam-Wurney Building, eleven o'clock. I invite the mayor, I invite the vice mayor, I invite the city attorney, I invite all of you.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker, Terry Rains.
Good morning. I'm glad you were holding this strategic plan follow-up meeting on schedule and look forward to hearing about your detailed progress on the goals and objectives set for this new three-year plan. I would request again that its matrix and all updates be posted on the city's website under the strategic plan page. I'd like to remind all of you that goal number one, achieve financial stability, is your top priority, hence it being the first goal from the strategic plan, first strategic plan carried over to this one. Putting two tax measures on the ballot that the voters so generously approve does not mean you have met your objectives for this one by any means. Sadly, staff did so much work bringing revenue generating ideas to this council that were all rejected by you. I was especially floored that you would not consider putting a measure on the ballot to increase transient occupancy tax, AKA hotel tax, so it would be more in line with surrounding cities, especially given the new hotel developments underway and/or planned at the mall site. The Republicans on this council are much more concerned about their political careers versus the financial health of our city. Newsflash for you, an increase in hotel tax would not hurt Westminster residents. It would mostly be paid by visitors to our city who utilize our services while they're in town. To me, that one seemed like a no-brainer to pursue. The same goes for cannabis taxes. Westminster residents who use cannabis, and there are many, currently pay the increased cannabis taxes to other cities, helping their bottom line, not ours. Make it make sense. Put aside your partisan political crap for a minute and do what's right for our city. I'd also like to hear an update on the annexation of the Midway City Islands. The matrix just shows revised, ongoing discussions, but I'd sure like to hear of any progress made so far. Also under goal number one is the objective investigate more efficient use of city-owned properties for income generation and economic development. Any objective you set must benefit this entire city and all its residents, not a select group. Some of these goals and objectives seemingly have been hijacked by certain council members for their own pet projects to score political points with their supporters. We, the residents and taxpayers of this city, are who own these city-owned properties, and as such, any change to the use and management of said facilities must benefit us all. I couldn't help but notice the RFQ issued on October third for on-call landscape architecture design services. The scope of services include site analysis, feasibility studies, master planning for parks, open space and civic facilities, land use and zoning review, base map presentation, utility planning, and community revitalization planning. We already have a robust parks master plan. This RFQ sure sounds like it's for the Blakely Park takeover. Did council approve issuing this RFQ? I don't recall a discussion about it, but maybe I missed it. Please prioritize the budget, not the BS today. And also, you should know that staff is on camera all the time now because of the change in, so I don't know if they're comfortable with that on that side, and the podium is too low for a lot of people, so just a little feedback there. Thank you.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
All right, thank you very much, but on behalf of the city council, I want to thank you for taking the time to be here this morning. Not only that, our staff too. And I'm not, we are here to do exactly, you know, what the city, what the residents want, so we are not here to be asked, just like the comments. So I want to make sure that that is the fact, that we are here to do the city business and we do it transparently, we do it with accountability. Thank you. All right, at this time here, strategic planning workshop facilitated by Ryder Smith, Troy Pappy Smith. At this time, I would like to ask you to stop, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this fine morning in the beautiful county of Orange in beautiful Westminster. My name is Ryder Smith. I am president and co-founder of the firm, Troy Pappy Smith, and you will recall was less than six months ago, we were in this very room having a robust, healthy, transparent conversation about the priorities you all had for the future of your community. And I want to thank you all again for engaging in dialogue with our team to really probe deeply on the issues and concerns you had for the community and trying to build a better future here. I think it came together nicely and we ended up with a very solid plan. Part of that plan was to come back every six months and check in, see how we're doing, talk about the progress, figure out where we're going next. This is a three-year plan that was put together, and we are now just short of the six months. This is a three-year plan that was put together, and we are now just short of the six months. So today is that day to come back and check in on the plan. In the past, when we did our strategic planning process, I had benefited from a voice in the heavens named Kylie, who would type in remotely on our work document, and we would simultaneously edit that while we were talking, collaborating together. I am happy to say that the voice of God has now descended upon us, and she's actually sitting here with us, so I want to just note Kylie's son on our team is sitting here today. So thank you Kylie for being here with us to take notes. As we have done in the past, Kylie has a Word document that will project up on the screens for the benefit of the audience to see, and she'll be doing some real-time editing on the strategic plan matrix to ensure that we're capturing your feedback and guidance as well as taking in the content from your city staff. The format for today is going to be pretty straightforward. We're going to identify, as was indicated in the staff report, in the matrix that I believe is now in front of you in paper, is that correct, Mayor? You have a paper one? We're going to roll through the ones that have been completed. We will identify those that we haven't completed or we need to adjust a revised schedule on because we didn't meet the timeline objective that you had laid out as a city council and talk about those things. And then finally, we have some suggested potential new objectives to work on under each of the goal areas that your expert city staff have identified as potentials, and of course, what we're interested in is your feedback on those. As we review the ones that are itemized as done, I would invite you to offer any comments or observations on the completion of those, or if you have questions about the status of any of those and would like to bring up some follow-up discourse, you know, I'm prepared to hear that, we want to hear that. We're here to engage in a dialogue and conversation with one another. Any questions about the format, Mayor or members of council? We're good? Okay, let's roll through and do some work together. So, under our initial goal area of achieve financial stability, we had three identified deliverable items, all of which, those top three have been identified as completed. They were all delivered primarily through delivery of a staff report back in June, so we're a few months out on that. Are there any questions or follow-up comments on that? I do have one area I want to probe, but before I do, I want to give you all the floor.
I have a question. So we're, since it's Mark Dunn, are we saying that we don't want to speak on those items as far as we're done?
So, we are prepared to talk about those items. We have follow-on questions or comments you want to make about them, so the-
Yes, I mean, to me, sitting on this council and being in the city for as long as I have, everybody knows, it's no secret that our financial situation is not where it needs to be, and this Mark Dunn, I know we got a report on it, but we didn't do anything about it. So just reporting on it doesn't really help our city and our residents if we just get a report on it. To me, it seems like we, as a council, need to do something. As long as I've been here-
If I can just jump in-
Yes.
For the sake, for the sake of time, so if it wasn't clear, what we've normally done is we take the, these are, so we have three-year goals, so these goals remain the three-year goals. These are six-month objectives, so when we listed that it's done, it's based on what that current objective is. So there was an objective to establish a policy, but this is the opportunity, we go over the last six months' worth of objectives, and then based on that, you talk about it, and then you can build on these particular objectives.
I understand, I've been through a couple of these before. My question is not necessarily to staff, my question is to council, is like, what are we doing? We're not going to take any action on any of these, we don't want to talk about these, we, we want to, we're scared of these? Our financial situation is not getting any better. What, as a council, have we done? Staff has been doing their job, staff has been presenting all these options to us, and we, as a council, done nothing. We don't want to continue these topics that were put here before us by staff. There's no direction given to staff on any of these items. So my challenge is to, what are we doing as a council? To me, I think we're not doing nothing, just want to look good on all our events, like we're doing something, but we haven't done anything. As, there's no, there's no secret, these TOT is not anything that we're putting onto our residents, these are transient occupancy tax, TOT, which we're way under compared to other cities, way under. So this is not a tax on our residents, it's a tax to visitors to our city. Why aren't we acting on this? Why don't we want to talk about it? Cannabis. Many cities are benefiting from it. Our residents are paying taxes somewhere else. It's illegal for us to prohibit deliveries into our city, and we're not benefiting from it. What are we doing? Why are we scared of this? To me, is that we gotta, you know, not sitting on our hands, we gotta do something. Let's, let's, let's move forward with progress in our city. Everything is getting more expensive. Staff wages need to go up, and we have no, we're not, we're not in a situation to address those needs that are, those financial situations that are keeping our city down competitively. We can't keep up with the wages and the fees, excuse me, the wages to staff in our neighboring cities, and we're losing, we're going to end up losing police officers, we're going to have losing staff to neighboring cities because we can't compete with neighboring cities. And to me, it's a challenge to our staff, excuse me, a challenge to my colleagues here that we gotta do something. And ignoring it is not going to get it done. So if it was up to me, we would give direction to staff to bring us back, what can we, how can we move forward on these items? At least the TOT and cannabis. And city manager, if you're, what would you recommend?
May I respond to you?
Yes.
Since you asked city council for action on this? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I will express in terms of my response to your concern. I believe that back in May, or some, sometime ago, that we have this strategic meeting, council assigned staff as well as the consultant to look into different areas for us in terms of achieve financial stability, and they have the deadline. And today, they are coming back, and what I'm looking at is, you know, the first two items here, done, done, done. And so what I want to learn is from, from this meeting is like, for example, for the third item there, explore the opportunities to generate revenues for city, including so-and-so and so. I want to hear from them what, what done means, what they have done already, so they can express, they can go ahead and explain, update us on that. When we have that information, then we can move forward. Otherwise, you know, we give them the task already, and they, they are working, and that's why they come back and reported to us today. So why don't you go ahead and-
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Mayor and staff, you went around, so it's my turn to address-
I asked.
So like you mentioned, you talk about the council and we finish. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. From what I'm hearing is that the purpose of today's meeting is for us to go over what we have done and how we can move forward and improve. We're going to stay here till 1 o'clock, guys, to figure this out. We're not just hearing their, you know, feed, like their statement of like, hey, this is what we're going to do. They're going to get our feedback as well, and from there, she's taking note, Townsend is taking notes to see what we're going to do moving forward. So this is the game plan, if this is correct, staff. Today is to go over what we have done, and then moving forward, what we should do, is that correct, Townsend?
So, correct, so, and I was particularly, I appreciate the vice mayor raising the question on the revenue measure ones in particular, or the revenue options, because I was curious as a facilitator and looking at that general strategic direction, we've had a report on that, and I think our goal is to come out of this today, hopefully understanding if there is a desire to pursue one of these options or a couple of these options today and make that a new objective that we then work on for the next six months to deliver for you all.
Correct.
Absolutely. Let me finish, Mr. Vice Mayor. So what I'm saying is that Mr. Vice Mayor's statement's incorrect. We're not here to be aimlessly wasting our time. We're here to make things happen and to move our city forward and to make sure we incentivize money into our city, and that's what we're doing, is that correct?
I guess that we don't need to fight on that, just that we need to go on.
Yeah, I'm actually hearing, I'm actually hearing lots of agreement, if I could just note, I'm hearing agreement.
Your statement's not fair.
Yes, it is fair.
So please don't say that we're not doing anything, we're wasting our time.
No.
I'm sorry, please, one at a time, please.
Can I continue?
You are done.
Can I, can I continue? Thank you, Mayor. As, as, as Mr. Smith-
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith has stated, clearly stated, they presented these options to us six months ago, okay? And there was no direction to staff for them to pursue this, these two items, any of these items, is that not correct, Mr. Smith?
My understanding, my understanding is there was a staff resort, we raised these items for discussion, and council wanted background. In June of this year, we, the city staff presented options on all these revenue measures to council, and there was no direction given in that point to say, please go pursue that.
Correct, thank you.
And so I think I'm here as a facilitator, asking if you have any additional direction.
I understood that pretty simple, pretty plain. He explained that, that there was no direction to pursue these six months ago. Do we not understand what he just said?
That's why today, we're going to take action.
No, today, today-
Taking action today to evaluate-
I, I move forward, I make a motion for staff to bring us back, make a motion for bring us back the visibility to pursue these two items.
Two items, so-
The TOT and cannabis. Bring us back-
My understanding is, sir.
Bring us, bring us back, and from your, your expertise, how do we pursue these two items here?
So, I, I think, and thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that point direct. And usually in these formats where we're facilitating, it's an informal conversation, so I certainly want to hear consensus from council on this, but if the consensus I hear from council is, we are open and interested in pursuing either a TOT or cannabis tax, thank you, then we will go back with, we will make that an objective, and we will set a timeline for us to come back. What would, normally in my experience with these, we would come back with a timeline and a plan of what it takes to get there, and then you would have a chance to ask staff to pursue that even further and actually sink city resources into it, and then that goes on there from polling research-
That's how these work, that's how these, we're setting goals, these are goal-setting. We need to give them direction to move forward. That is, I don't, is council not understanding what we're doing here today?
It's not what we don't understanding, but we, we understand that this, you reported back to us.
Yeah, keep recording me, I don't understand why you're recording me, maybe you need to record me so you learn.
My turn, sir.
Yes, but I don't appreciate, I don't appreciate her recording me, or recording you by the, no.
I mean, the city attorney.
So, two things, if I may. Number one, this is a study session, so, which means that we cannot be taking action on items. Certainly, what we can do is we can provide feedback and for direction at future meetings, and I think that's everybody's intent. So I think if we can, what is the most efficient way forward?
Thank you for asking the question. So I, I'm keenly interested, and I really think we're coalescing around follow-up on this item, that's item three here, is how do we proceed forward on a potential additional revenue consideration?
Yes.
And so, hearing at least one council member expressed a desire to see pursuit of cannabis or TOT as tax options and bring a staff report back to you in the near future about what that would look like, I would be keenly interested in hearing from the three additional council members, if you have thoughts on pursuit of either of those two items or a different revenue option that's available to you that was presented at the June council meeting.
We, for my, I, I think that we need to, I agree with Vice Mayor that we need to pursue further, but at the same time, you know, I want to hear what you have done in the last period, so that we know exactly what you, you know, exactly what we can do to help you to move forward, or help staff to move forward.
Okay. So I'll have perhaps staff comment a little bit about the June-
I understand that you may have a proper information for us already, but just briefly, you know, update everyone here for the purpose of transparency and, you know, and accountability. So go ahead and let us know, you know, in terms of transient TOT or cannabis taxes or expanded.
Yeah, so I think maybe this would be a good time for me to ask your city manager to convey information or share, reshare some of the information we shared at the June staff report on this particular item.
Before we move, continue, city attorney, and mayor, I expressed earlier that I personally do not want one of my colleagues recording me here while we're on the dais, I don't know if the rest of the, my colleagues are comfortable with that?
I prefer that to our city attorney to let us know what direction that I can take, and so, let me know, please.
So, you've received a request to not be recorded, this meeting already is being recorded, so it's, I guess you're being asked if you would be willing to stop recording, given that it appears to be at least causing distraction?
Can I, can I also retext, is there any way for the council to make a motion to invoke on that?
I make a motion to ask-
Hold on, let me ask the city council, is it legal for us to do that?
You can certainly request that she do so.
Okay, all right. So is there a motion to, to, Vice Mayor Menzo?
Yes, Mayor, I just do not feel comfortable, and I think it's very unprofessional for us to be recording each other, our meetings are recorded, so I motion to ask-
And I second that.
Ask her not to record.
I want to make a statement, if you guys are going to make a motion. So unfortunately, this is my freedom of speech, and Christian from your law firm make a statement last time, that if it's, since it's recording, I have the ability to record, it's my freedom of speech, my freedom of, you know, to record, that's my ability. So likewise, this is all live already, this is to the public, I can do likewise. So I don't think it's, the city should take a legal action or a motion to remove my freedom. It is unconstitutional, so I want you guys to understand that before you make this motion.
Well, there is a motion on the floor, and there's a motion and second on the floor. If you don't agree, you can also do the substantive motion. If you want to do the substantive motion, it's time for you right now.
The city attorney said you can ask me to remove it, but it's my right, I have the right to record, I'm not distracting anyone, I'm not making any statement.
Understand, but the, the city attorney also stated clearly that the council can make a motion, can, can move out with the decision on this.
You can ask her, request her.
So there, there are two issues. Number one is, certainly, the city council has the authority to request that you do so, but number two, it is important to understand that if your recording is deemed a distraction, that, and frankly, the fact that we're talking about this suggests to me that it is a distraction. Now, you know, we could fight about it in the court of law, or you could ask, or you could essentially do what is being requested, which I, we haven't had a vote on it, but at minimum, I think it would be appropriate to ask the council if they would like this to be done, and then you can decide whether you would like to agree with what is being requested of you.
So.
Okay, so. So, that's okay for us to do the motion, right?
So, I would, I would first start with a request, a motion to request that she stop recording.
Okay.
So we have a motion in a second on the floor already.
But the, the city attorney, the motion is to request her to not recording?
Correct, yeah, that's my motion.
Okay, and my second.
Thank you.
So now we have to get the response from her, or how are we going to push-
She's had discussion, so we've had a motion in a second.
All right. We have the motion and the second, go ahead, in call roll.
I have a motion made by Vice Mayor Manzo, second by Mayor Nguyen, to request District One, Councilwoman Fan West, to not record from the dais. I'll go ahead and call roll, District One, Councilwoman Fan West.
This is my right, it is a public arena, and I am allowed to record, I'm not distracting anyone. It is already publicly recording, so it's no different, and so my motion is no, because obviously, you guys have the three majority, you guys are going to vote accordingly, and I hope you do what's right, because we don't want a lot of lawsuits, since Mr. Vice Mayor is talking about we don't have funding already in the city, and it's up to your guys' discretion and discernment to choose what's right. So also, right now, on my, on my social media, it says broadcast detail, they're controlling, you guys right here, whoever it is, is controlling my, my- you guys right here, whoever it is, is controlling my, my feedback right now. When it shows that Carlos Manzo is moving his hand, he's not even moving his hand right now at, at all. And so there's something going on right now.
Okay, so the vote is no.
So, look, you guys can look at Chief, look, what's going on?
Don't, don't get, don't get them involved, please, don't get them involved.
He's not even moving his hand, but this is moving.
Right.
It's completely weird and awkward.
That, that is a broadcast delay, that's just a broadcast delay.
And, and what, what, your vote?
So someone's tapping into my phone right now.
No one's tapping into your phone.
Look, it's zooming in and out.
So what, your vote right now? We have the motion and the second, we're calling for the vote.
This is ridiculous, I'm not even touching this zooming, and they just zoom. And.
Councilmember Fan West, we've got a motion and a second. I heard that your vote was a no.
Your vote no, then.
My vote is no, and someone's tapping onto my phone right now.
District Three, Councilmember Winn.
Call for the next person, please.
District Three, Councilmember Winn.
She, she voted no already, please.
I have her vote, District Three, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo.
Yes.
Mayor Winn.
Yes.
Motion carried three, one.
All right. So with the motion three, one, that passed?
It has, it has been passed, so now we have a request. Can I suggest a quick, a quick recess?
All right, okay, all right. At this time, I call for five minutes recess. So let's come back here at ten fifteen, thank you. All right, I would like to restart, convene the meeting, so we'll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Winn.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Manzo.
I'm here.
District One, Councilwoman Fan West.
Fan West, here.
District Three, Councilmember Winn.
Here.
District Four, Councilmember Winn. Mayor, you have a quorum with District Four, Councilmember Winn absent.
All right, thank you very much. My apology for not a productive meeting as we just started. We, we would like to concentrate our, do concentrate on discussing the items in front of us here, but unfortunately, that, that happened. At this time here, I understand, Councilmember West, if you have, you're recording at one place still, then it's not a problem. But if you turning their, you know, your phone and recording this person, that person, or, then it's, it tends to disrupting the, the, the meeting and disrupting the council members here, I understand from Vice Mayor's standpoint. So I ask you, if you can hold it still at one place, then it should be okay. But if you are turning it, you know, to different person, then it will be destructive to every one of us. I don't know whether it's okay with, with you on that. If not, then I have to adjourn this meeting to, and then, and then reschedule this meeting until next. Are you okay with that?
I do understand what you're talking about. I made my statement earlier, and let me clarify. I have my freedom to do recording, this is a public arena and it's already record live. I'm just recording, I'm not being distracted, I'm not talking to the phone or anything. So it's fair. You should not be disciplining your colleague when that's their right, your, their constitutional rights. And if you want lawsuit, you can, but this is wasting the people's tax dollars. This is my constitutional right, Mr. Mayor, and what you're doing is unconstitutional.
I understand your constitut, constitutional right, but at the same time, we just ask so that you can hold your camera still in one place, so that way we don't be distracted when we are talking, when we are presenting about items. That's all I ask, if you can do that.
I, number one, Mr. Mayor, again.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
I'm not distracting.
Thank you, I heard, I heard enough of you. At this time, I would like to open up for the city attorney to comment on this.
So, I was, so the city council passed a motion to request that the council member not turn on, to not have the phone showing. And she is correct, that if it's not a distraction, then she has the First Amendment right to continue as she's doing. And to be clear, what the council, what the mayor just asked Councilmember Fan West to do was to simply, if she wants to continue recording the meeting, that is fine, but it would be a distraction if you're spending your time on the phone, changing camera angles, because then we're all watching you, not actually focusing on the meeting. So that's the concern. So I think that's the ruling of the mayor, that it would be distracting if you're doing that, otherwise you certainly may continue. And that was what I was trying to explain to you earlier, that you were correct, that you have the freedom of speech, and also the city council has the freedom to request that you not do that. They stated their opinion, and you've chosen to not follow their opinion, and that is also your legal right. So I think enough time has been spent on this, that, that is the decision, and I think that's the path forward. So if we can, hopefully, move along to the rest of the meeting, I think that's the desire of the council.
So with that, council members, I'd like to ask you for your opinion on this. At the same time, I would like to concur with our consultant, and his staff, if we can adjourn this meeting and then reschedule it until a later time. If that's the case, we need to have the motion, we have to have the motion on this. To, we reschedule this.
You would, you would need a motion to, well, I mean, you can either adjourn unless the majority of the council disagrees, but I would, I would suggest a motion if you wish to adjourn and to continue it to some other date.
All right, I understand that the city attorney overs, oversaid that we have enough discussion on this, and this is one last time that I'm asking you, if we, if we ask you to hold their camera in one place, that, you know, it is, it will not distract us here from the dais, can you do that, so that we can proceed with the meeting? Otherwise, I am going to, to reschedule this or adjourn this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, let me make it clear again, we are all adults here, and as a councilwoman, I'm not being distracted or distracting the meeting. So I just made it clear, and I hope you understand that, and you don't treat your colleague like a kid. We're all adults, we are elected by the people in our district, so I would ask for the same respect, Mr. Mayor and the council.
Yes, I understand you, as we are adult, we are not a kid, but at the same time, when you turn the camera into your council member when they're talking, that's a distraction. So I, I think that, 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 that's not polite. And so all we ask you is if you keep that still and concentrate on the meeting, and then respect your council member by not recording them during the time that they, I'm sure that the, we have the city recording here, if you want to, you can always attract it from there. You don't need to record it, you know, yourself. But it seemed to me that she is not going, willing to do so. So at this time here, I ask the council members here, if you agree with me, I will make a motion, a motion to adjourn this meeting and do, and have staff to go ahead and reschedule this meeting. And my apology to our staff, as well as the residents, that we cannot do this, accomplish our goal today, but we'll come back soon. So, yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and sorry to interrupt you, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I understand, yes, it is a distraction, I personally think it's very unprofessional of us to, for my colleague to do that. I just don't, I've never seen this before, and it's very childish and unprofessional. But I, we've, have all our staff here, we have our, you know, consultant here, and I think it'd be very, you know, unproductive for us to, to, to reschedule this. Let's just, if she's gonna continue to act this way, to me, I'm just gonna try to ignore her as much as possible, and let's just proceed.
All right.
And, and, and just, I'm sorry for, for us derailing this meeting to get started in this way, but this is what we've been dealing with for the last three years, so, thank you.
Since you're the one who complained about that, and so you, you are willing to work with that, I don't have any problem. I think that, you know, is prudent for us to move the meeting forward. So I take back my motion, and with that, we will continue the, the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So back to you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it, I appreciate council's fortitude to move forward in this process, it's super important to us. So we were in a, I'll get, provide an option here, I can go back and start from the beginning again, if you would like.
Yes, can you also reiterate your introduction and make sure that we know which company you're with?
Yeah, sure, happy to clarify that too. So my name's Ryder Smith, I'm with a firm called Tripp Epi Smith, and we do strategic planning, recruitment support, we also do a ton of public outreach, public engagement, things of that nature. We've done our work in, in the last year for 256 different entities, including about 120 different cities in California, over just the last 12 months. So we see a lot of city government in the work that we do, and I hope that some of that expertise is available to you as we talk about the challenges and opportunities that face your fair city. So as a reminder, today, our whole process is to both update you on the progress that's been made towards objectives that are meeting the goals you established as a city council, and also seek additional direction and feedback on what's next for us, what's, what's set to deliver. Your staff experts have identified a couple of opportunities to pursue, but there are certain key areas that as council members, we definitely need feedback and direction on a policy basis, so your city staff can go off and execute. I'll turn my attention to section one, which is on the achieve financial stability for the city, and just note a couple of things, the top three ones are identified as done, and to be clear, that doesn't mean we are done achieving financial stability, it just means that the interim objectives and defined objectives that you gave for your staff to go pursue have been accomplished. All three of those were accomplished through the delivery of a staff report coming to the city council with policy options and background information, with the intent of providing you access to the necessary information to make decisions as policymakers, to direct your staff to move on to the next phase. The one in particular that's come up in the conversation is ultimately additional revenue options and pursuing additional revenues for the city. And we had some initial discussion about TOT and cannabis taxes, two potential options to continue pursuing, and I think your city staff is anxious to understand if there's a desire to do that. I will just express that in the typical timeline for pursuing potential ballot revenue measures, we are really up against a timeline that should start now or pretty soon. So if you're seeking direction on this, and you want to do something that would theoretically land in the November 2026 election, now would be the time to provide some direction account to your staff, so we could pursue that. So I maybe'd like to return briefly to that, well, not briefly, but I would turn to the conversation of TOT and cannabis tax. Is this something that other council members have a consensus thought about pursuing or getting additional research? I heard some consensus here, Mayor, I believe, I heard you express a desire to see some additional information brought back. And I was about to actually turn it over to Christine and ask her to provide a summary statement on the 625 presentation that was done. So maybe before I pursue additional feedback, I'll turn it over to Christine.
I would just very briefly, this is a, you know, this is a topic that was brought up in the first three years plan, as well as, you know, in, in this plan. There was a report that was provided on June 25th that did talk about what, you know, what these, what the numbers look like, what the processes would be. You know, our finance director can explain a little bit more about it, but at the end of the day, a presentation was made at the city council meeting, and there was no, there was no really, you know, robust discussion or direction to move in any direction regarding pursuing any of those particular opportunities. or direction to move in any direction regarding pursuing any of those particular opportunities. So, so it's just left as that.
So, so there's been some information provided, and I think the question we face now, your staff faces is where else would you like us to go? I think I've summarized accurately the mayor and the vice mayor's sentiment on an interest in potentially those two revenue options of cannabis and TOT. I would be interested in hearing from council member Nguyen as well as council member West.
I would be interested in pursuing opportunities on these two items.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman?
What is your question again?
Yeah, Mike, I am interested in your thoughts on pursuing a TOT, a transient occupancy tax measure and/or a cannabis tax measure in the city.
You know, I think it's important to look into the hotel tax. I think that's, you know, that's a general, you know, tax. I think that would help and benefit our city when those who travel, you know, through the TET parade and other events in our city. So I think that's great.
Okay.
But the other one, maybe we can, maybe we can make a decision to vote one item at a time for the tax. So maybe this first one, if we can talk about the TOT, and then we can take the second vote. I think that'd be great.
Sure. So since we're in study session, I'll defer to legal counsel in terms of how we take votes to speak on some of those items. But I think the consensus I hear is considering of both, and perhaps there's unanimous consent or agreement that there's a desire to pursue the TOT, and, but there's also some interest in the cannabis tax as well. I would just offer one other possibility, too, to consider, which is as part of the effort of pursuing a tax measure, that you do a scientifically valid survey to understand community perspectives on these two items. And that could also be significantly helpful to you as council members. So maybe that part of the objective you want to identify is to secure a scientifically valid survey, to actually probe the community sentiment about these issues and be able to report back on some of them to better guide the viability of the tax measure, as well as just general sentiment about it as well.
Yeah, I think it's great to have transparency. And in order to make it more transparent, is maybe we should vote for each tax. We're going to put our name to it. So maybe first, I motion for the council to vote on the hotel tax if we want to recommend staff to come back with the information on that. And then the second round, we're going to ask those who want cannabis tax, we're going to put our name to it. Okay? So I think that's fair, and that's transparent. So why don't we start with that?
Well, so, so just to, just to remember, so there's no voting that's supposed to be happening on, as far as this, this is all consensus building. But what we can do is, what in the past, what's happened is it's, these, these ideas or opportunities have been grouped together, you know, as like operate, as opportunities, but it sounds like there's a clear, there's a desire to separate the two. So what we can do is we can create a separate, we can, we can create a separate objective just for transient occupancy tax. So we'll take what we already did in June, and we can kind of expand on that. And, and then with cannabis, we can also, we can take that as a separate objective as well. So you'll still have both objectives. They'll just be treated independent now instead of grouping them together like they've been, you know, in the last, in the last rounds.
Right. For me, like I said, I'm more interested in the hotel tax. I'm not interested in the cannabis tax. So those who want it, they can vote on it or make a motion however. But for me, I just concerned about the hotel tax.
I heard you very clear, allowing clear, council member West. But at the same time, I believe that back in May or some time ago, we already decided that these are the items that we have to look into. So at this point here, I agree with the city manager, we can separate, separate the items, but at the same time, we want to, to proceed with this. My, I want to proceed forward with the, I know that council member West wanted to look into this TOT first, and then later on, look into the, the other item. I'd like for you and staff to...
No, I, I didn't say that. You put words in my mouth. I do not want the cannabis. So if there's other avenue to get, generate tax into our city, I would love to get your option because you guys are helping us to strategize and find ways to make money to the city. So yes, number one, the hotel tax, yes, please do research on it. Second, come back with other avenue that we can create money in the city of Westminster.
Okay. I want to hear from the, from the council, but my understanding is proceed with the, the two and present with, to us for the next meeting.
Yes, I, I agree with the mayor. And these are just, we're not voting on anything right now as far as a tax measure. Right now, it's simply goal setting and simply direction for staff to move forward with getting us data on this, on these particular two items right now. That's all, that's all we're, we're talking about right here.
Yes. And maybe to bring a finer point to it, oftentimes in pursuit of policy like this, you start with a survey tool and some actual research. And I would just note, research like that is kind of the most extensive, it's a very extensive public engagement tool effectively because you're literally asking hundreds of voters how they think about something, which is, which is public engagement. So part of that objective in pursuing any of those would be pursuing a scientifically valid survey. And I think it would be helpful for the consensus, particularly on the timeline we're on, and for you all to make an informed decision if part of that objective were to ask city staff to pursue a contract with a survey research firm to help do that work. That's like the baby step into that process. Normally, particularly when it comes to decisions about which tax to pursue, that's going to evolve with a council vote to identify additional resources at a later date, once you've seen some of that data. And then finally, you will have the ultimate say on what measure you decide to pursue because as a council, you'll vote on a resolution likely in June of 2026 to indicate we'd like to go to ballot on this particular measure. And you'd have a very specific opportunity to vote yea or nay on any particular ballot measure that's at that time.
Yes, and that would be for staff to bring us that direction, that, that information if we're going to pursue that. But right now, I think the consensus on, on council is these two particular items to proceed with direction for staff to bring us back.
I want to hear from council member Mark Wayne.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I would like to, these two items, I want you guys to pursue concurrently. I do not like it to be separated.
Okay.
Pursue concurrently at the same time.
Okay. So I, we are, it's all in research phase. And even if we were doing, say, authorizing survey research, that would also involve questioning both items and seeing what's viable. And I think as elected officials and policymakers, you want to understand some community sentiment around that. So it's helpful, it's just decision-making data. You always have the responsibility as elected leaders to make those decisions. So the consensus I'm hearing is we are interested in pursuing the, both of these. One made, one council member objecting to cannabis, understood. But the, there is consensus to at least begin the steps, which will include authorizing survey research and going down a path to come back to you with viability of these options, as well as additional details on potential timelines to accomplish them. So we can consider hitting a timeline that would hit November of 2026.
Consultant, if you don't mind, Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
We can go ahead. And I think we have spent enough time on that already. So why don't we go and proceed with your presentation?
Okay, very good. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I summarized my points.
Starting a rep. One more. Is on, on top of these three items, there, there on the, on the what, these three bullet points, is there any other, any other possibilities of additional fees that maybe staff, you know, that we need to update? Or maybe this is a question for either city manager, assistant city manager. Are we updated on park fees, traffic fees?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the question. This would be an appropriate time to revisit a few fees in the city. The traffic impact fee has not been updated in many years. I will note that an analysis of the traffic impact fee may result in lower fees, which is perfectly okay, but just simply going through the process is something that we've not done in many, many years. The other one that was a little bit of an oversight with past administration was the adoption of the Parks Master Plan came with some very clear recommendations. And one of those was to revisit park fees, and that has not been done. So I would say those are two. And while we're on the topic, we would, just as part of our due diligence, we would also look regionally to see what other cities are utilizing as far as fees and bring back that to council as well.
Okay. So looking to what other cities are doing as far as fees?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's something that, how would that, is that something staff can handle to look into that?
Definitely. We're really good at our research. The preliminary research will bring you back information on, on the topic we just described.
Mayor, what do you think? Park, traffic fees as the city, assistant city manager is speaking of?
Yeah. City manager, do you, you have any comment on that?
I mean, it's, it's just good business, business. We should be evaluating fees frequently anyway to make sure that, you know, that it's balanced one way or another. So we can certainly look into that.
Okay. All right. Council member Mark Wayne. I'm sorry. Council member Mark Wayne first?
I'm also interested in more detail on the establishment of the, you know, the BID, the Business Improvement District, let's say for Little Saigon District, the Little Saigon District and the Westminster Mall. Let's pursue that.
Yep. So, so let me bring a little bit of order and distill some things I've heard, which is I'm hearing, I want to make sure I close the loop on the, on the fees. So your assistant city manager surfaced the need to adjust traffic impact fees and park fees as well. And so that's, that's bubbled up as a potential objective for us to identify to pursue in here. So I'm hearing, I want to make sure we have consensus on, on looking at that, but I'd like to make sure I put a bow on that one. And then we do have a line item to actually talk about the Business Improvement District. And at that point, I'd probably like to add, city staff, add any additional color commentary about that. That was one of those objectives that we had identified that we wanted to get to in August in full transparency. We didn't get there. So we want to reestablish a date to revisit that and provide some additional context for you. But if, if I could just, do we have consensus about the park and traffic impact fees, at least trying to study those to make sure that they're fair and accurate?
The answer is yes.
Okay, so...
Can, can we answer him first, and then I will call you?
I'm sorry?
The answer, he's asking the question, right?
So I'm, I'm hearing a yes from the council.
And your answer is?
Well, I haven't finished even to the last question. So I just want to confirm. So basically, city manager, we're not splitting the two item, two tax items separately? Is that correct? We're not doing that? We're clumping it together?
That is up to...
Since the majority of the three. So Townsend, is it correct that the majority of the three want to clump everything together?
What, what I heard is they would like to research these in combination, and you will have a later time at which you get to choose which particular measure you're going to pursue.
Okay. And did you add into that dialogue to research other avenues to bring in tax into the city?
So I heard a question being asked about additional revenues that were surfaced mostly around fees. And so that's when we wandered into a discussion about traffic impact fees and park fees. There are certainly other revenue options. I'm not familiar with every option that was presented at that June 25th staff memo. So I'd be happy to defer to the city manager about additional revenue options. There are certainly a litany of other tax options that exist out there in terms of real estate transfer fees and things like that, but that gets very complicated. And these ones had previously been identified by council as likely ones to pursue and therefore had risen to the top in previous discussions. I'm not sure, am I answering your questions?
Yeah. So basically, you, the majority suggested today to, for you guys to bring forward those two tax item. Is that correct? But please make sure notate that I'm not interested in the second cannabis tax. I'm just interested in the first.
Understood.
Appreciate that.
Okay. And then was your, do you, just make sure, I'm including you in this conversation, the traffic impact fees, you're, are you supportive of making sure we've updated our fee schedule appropriately?
Well, the thing is that it doesn't have to be other taxes. I'm asking if there's other way of making, generating money into our city without big tax proposal for the people to vote.
Yes.
You know, other things that we can do. So if you can come back with those information, it'd be great.
So, and a couple of things I want to be clear about, too, is Tripp EpiSmith won't be coming back on that. That'll be your capable city staff that will come back for that. But having said that, there was a discussion about traffic impact fees and, and park fees and just making sure we have consensus. I'm hearing majority consensus on making sure those are accurately updated, and we're going to make that an objective to bring back to council for them to review.
I mean, we have the majority vote already decided, so whatever my decision doesn't make a difference. So go ahead, move forward with what the majority decided.
Before you move forward, I believe that we have comments from city council, I mean, city attorney.
All right, very good. So...
Hold on, hold on.
I just want to clarify that it's not that the council voted to approve the taxes rather, that's voted to do additional research, that staff would come back with more information.
Correct. I've heard a consensus. I've heard a consensus. Okay. So there was a, council member Nguyen had raised a question about the Business Improvement District. I would invite comments or an update on that particular objective, I assume from Adolfo. In terms of researching the establishment of Business Improvement District?
Correct. We, we do, we have performed substantial analysis on this topic, and we are definitely ready to present that to council. So staff will be ready if council's interested in hearing that.
And so we had previously established August as a timeline to get that done. Didn't make that timeline. As you now know, we're in October. So I suspect sometime in November, if not end of October, we would be in a position to present that?
Definitely. Things get a little weird with council meetings towards the end of the calendar year, but yes, definitely before the end of this year, you'll, we would be prepared to present this item to council.
So with council's support and consensus, we'd like to bring back to you an extensive report about that by December of this year.
If we could get meeting dates from the city clerk, we'd be happy to.
There's only one meeting in December, so it's just the meeting in December.
Okay.
We'll get you a date.
Definitely, yes.
Does that work, council member?
Thank you.
Does that make sense for adjusting that date? Great. Thanks, team. Okay. And then the other one was provide an update to the city council on the status of additional creative revenue services. So these, so general fund revenues and how they're being invested, annexation of county islands, investigating more efficient use of city properties that are currently owned by city for income. We had an objective initially to deliver this in September of 2025. We're looking to revise this as we have ongoing discussions regarding annexation. So I think we're looking for a new date at which to come back and present an update to the city council on these items. And I will defer to the city manager's, assistant city manager, comment additionally on this if necessary.
So we, so, yeah, so we, so there were things that were happening, obviously, at the county. We have a consultant that we're using to engage in these discussions with the county. So part of the, you know, part of the process is obviously working with LAFCO, working with county, finding, you know, finding a, a bit of a baseline of where we can work off to, to finally go out and, and, you know, and pursue this. Our, you know, our consultant, I know, is still working with the county on those discussions. And I know our assistant city manager spoke with her recently.
I did. I spoke with consultant over the weekend, and I am, I am happy to report that there is current stable leadership at the county level. I know that, that there was a transition between the CEO. There's also a good amount of information that needs to be gathered by county staff, and they are prepared to present that to us within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Just take us some time to process that and then come back to council with a report.
I think it's, as far as an update to the council, I think we literally just gave the update right now, as far as where we're at. So, you know, there's, there's not a, there's not a point in time right now for action for council. We just know that, you know, this is something that council is interested in pursuing. And this would be initially for the three county islands and not the larger Midway City because that does pose a completely different process. But, but certainly you just receive the update right now. And, you know, we can, I mean, we can put a date of, you know, maybe three months out for another update.
How, how do I?
Given that there's anything to update by then.
Yeah. So given this is kind of a living, breathing objective, my suggestion would be we either put a date three months out, or we just make it the estimated next time we're going to be back in here doing our six-month check-in, and we can revisit and provide an update. We can make sure it stays on the radar screen. I think fundamentally, we don't want it to come off the radar screen because we know this was an important objective of the council. Is there any objection to pursuing that?
When is that again? When is the due date again?
Oh, so it would be six, six months from today. So roughly April of 2026 would be the next time we'd, we'd ensure that it stays on the, on the report, and we would provide an update if there's new information that comes in sooner.
Okay. So we are six months behind on this.
Well, yeah. Well, it's, it's not that, so it's just about giving you guys an update. But really, our updates, there really wasn't much for us to update you about. A lot of the back, a lot of the discussion that happens between staff and the county is, it's a numbers game. It's numbers of properties. It's how do you handle code enforcement? You know, how do, how do these affect RENA numbers, et cetera? So that's literally the, all the update that we have. So...
Yeah, I understand that you, when, when you get into that, you get, you know... Yeah, I understand that you, when you, when you get into that, you get, you know, there are more and more information that you need to find out. However, we originally scheduled for September 25, and now we are moving out six months. Do you think that you need to have that six months, or you, can we be, you know, speed up the process a little bit?
So I would say it's, it's not so much the process that gets sped up because, so for annexation, I mean, they, they tell us it could be, you know, LAFCO says it could be anywhere 12 to 18 months for this type of like annexation, but there's not a decision making point yet. So until we come and provide you resolutions to adopt, that's really when the next update is. So we would potentially have an update prior to, you know, to you adopting resolutions per se. But that really just depends on can the city and the county get on the same page as far as, you know, what, what the expectations are, or what the quote unquote deal is going to look like, right?
So staff feel more comfortable by extending.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's really hard. It's really hard to say. Like we could say, yeah, we could say in a month, well, you know.
I support you on that.
I have a question, mayor.
Well, I have.
What, so what is the biggest hurdle to get over with the county as far as moving, getting this accomplished?
So when, when this was first brought on, there were initial discussions, and that was when we had a different CEO at the time. And, you know, and there, and just working with staff as far as, and working with LAFCO as well, as far as what the timeline looks like, what we're looking at in terms of data, you know, what their, what their population, land, what their needs are, et cetera, code enforcement issues. And then the county had a change in their executive staff, which then it, it also changed the dynamics at the county as well, as far as, you know, stability in their leadership. And so with that, we respectfully waited for them to figure out their leadership dynamics. And so now they have a, a somewhat permanent CEO and staffing is where it needs to be. They'll be able to reengage these conversations with the county. That just took a lot longer on their end to, to, you know, reestablish their, their leadership, if you will, and their operations.
So vice mayor, to be fair to the county as well as to the city, there is a component of state interaction, as you know, with the housing element and Rena numbers. It's a very touchy subject, and we are, they are working, and we are working with them to address those needs, but that involves state involvement as well.
Okay. So we are moving, doing everything in our power to move forward.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I just want to address this section here, the annexation of the county island midway, the three island. I've been talking to people on the ground because I do want to hear their concerns as well and what they think about it. What I notice is that a lot of them mentioned that they like what their little island is. So I think it's important to, if we can do a survey, to see people on the ground if they, in that, in those three islands, if they really want to be annexed by us, the city of Westminster. So I think we should do that. I recommend if you can do a survey on the ground, collaborating with the city to make sure that the three island midway, that they're okay with us to annex their city and get the taxes from them. So I know that the people are not okay with it because that's what we do as elected official, is to talk to people on the ground.
Mr. Smith, I'll take that.
Yeah, okay.
From you. I know the question was directed to you, but really staffs are the ones that are involved in this for quite some time. As part of this process, there is an outreach element that exists every single time that there's an annexation involved. So there's no need for a special direction on that that is built into the process.
All right. Thank you. Okay. And then, so we're, have consensus, we're going to give ourselves a six month window to work on this, mayor, and we're going to, but we may very well revisit it sooner. Some of these things are just out of our controls. We work with our friends at the county to make that happen. All right. The last item that has surfaced from your staff experts that I want to just surface here is providing a status update on the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So this is actually a follow up to what was the second item into this objective area. So the second item up there was update the city council on the economic development strategy, including outreach efforts and engagement with businesses in the city and sustaining partnerships with the Chamber of Commerce and other small business efforts. There's been an ongoing effort by city staff to work on a economic development strategic plan. And the goal is to, the simple objective is to present that plan to you, present you what the strategic plan is. I would defer to city staff to comment on any additional details around that objective.
Just thank you for the update. That's very accurate. We've actually come to council twice to discuss the Economic Development Strategic Plan. I don't remember the exact first date, but the first time we came through, prior to the date that's shown in the, in the matrix, we came to let you know what it was, what the RFP would look like, estimated cost, and the different, essentially the scope of services, the plan to essentially develop one. And then most recently, we came back with an actual request for the council to award a contract to a consultant. I'm happy to report that we did have a kickoff meeting with our consultant team, our new community, our interim community development director, as well as our economic development manager. And those, the process is, is moving forward. I do feel that this is a very important moment in time for the community's economic development interests, and we would like to see something involving economic development remain on these, on the matrix, and we're perfectly content with the, with what is listed as, as a replacement item for objective two to be, to provide a status update on the Economic Development Strategic Plan, essentially letting you know where we are in the process and providing you a little bit of a look in to a report that ultimately will come back to council for final approval.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. So we'll have consensus on that item. Great.
Well, you know, I just feel like, you know, my opinion doesn't really matter because we have the three here. So I'm going to just have to excuse myself and take off now. I appreciate that. Okay. Take care.
Okay. Let's move on to our goal area number two. Actually, before I do, are there any other objective items that council members would like to surface or bring to our attention that you'd like to raise under economic sustainability of the city? Our fiscal sustainability of the city?
For, for this topic under financial stability?
Yes. So we presented a couple of options which you've had consensus on. I just want to make sure that we are hearing from you if you have anything else you want to raise today. And if not, that's okay too. Don't feel pressure for it. I just want to make sure you have an opportunity. This staff, I'm sure, would tell you their plate is plentiful, so it's not that we're looking for things to work on, but I also want to make sure you have an opportunity to provide your feedback.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, we're good. All right. Very well. Let's move to our second goal area, which is implement and support effective land use policies that encourage.
Sorry, Ryder, can I just jump in real quick? So I just want to go back to achieving financial stability as well. I do want to make note on, now that we can talk a little bit more about the, the idea of researching for TOT and cannabis. It, you know, it, it did dawn on me that we do have an active application for, we do have an active cannabis establishment application in which we do not have, obviously, a revenue collecting process for that, if you will. So there may be a point in time when it's going to be, it's going to be beneficial to have those two discussions separately during the research because one is going to probably take effect sooner, or there's going to be a need to discuss that item sooner than the other.
So that would be.
So it's just, it's just basically.
As a process of that application though, right?
Yes, but that, but that also triggers a, you know, a possibility of having a larger conversation, you know, altogether, because, you know, again, it's there, the idea is on the table.
Okay. So what do you suggest?
That it just might be beneficial to have those two as separate, you know, as, as separate research items.
Okay. We will, we'll identify the objectives separately to pursue, and that'll provide a pathway. There'll be some shared interest around some of the survey research, I suspect, but ultimately we'll have specific objectives. One objective may fall off into the hinterlands when we decide, if you as a council decide not to pursue it, and the other one will proceed forward, assuming any one of them proceeds forward, or maybe both. It's unfair.
Yes, we'll go through the, I'm okay with the city manager's advice.
Okay, we'll write that up accordingly and make sure it's clear. All right. So thank you, Christine, for that clarifying comment. So next up is our goal area number two, which is implement and support effective land use policies that encourage quality development. You will note that the first of those three objectives were accomplished either through staff report presentations that were made in June. June was a very busy month for staff reports. Or through a tour that was taken in August by council members to actually explore other development in the area and just get a sense for what that development looks like. My understanding is that was a very successful tour and very informative. So I appreciate your all taking the time and commitment to honing the craft and learning best practices, touring around, looking at those. I'll pause on those for a moment and ask if staff has any comments they wish to provide for color commentary in any of those three before I invite any council comments.
So which one, what I, where are we?
Sorry. So this would be under, this would be the top three goals of initiate the general plan amendments. So we're in goal area number two, and then it's initiate the general plan amendments throughout the city and report back to the city council on the status and timeline to execute the environmental impact report process. That was delivered in the staff report in June. And then the second objective was provide a status update on the city's ongoing zoning phase two study, including an overview of the project schedule and cost. Again, that was a staff report in June. And then the third item that was achieved was to provide the city council with a bus tour of Orange County areas and Southern California to look at redevelopment, what's been successful, particularly for mixed use projects. And my understanding is you all took a tour on August 20th, or several of you, to go tour around and take a look at those programs or those, those developments.
On, since we haven't gotten completed and it hasn't been and complete the zoning, the zoning code update, I think we need to continue that and keep bringing that to us on an update until we get to a point where we're, the council is ready to vote on it as far as the process where we're at. But, you know, with that, I think I would want to make sure that council keeps getting an update on that until we're done.
Sure. So we do have our principal planner in the room, and he's ready to, he's available to provide a very brief update if the council would like as far as timelines and where we are at this moment, very brief. But as I hear you loud and clear, you'd like for these two items to remain because they are ongoing, and you just want to make sure that we bring them back as part of the matrix.
Yeah, I just don't want to get it to the point where, because it's deemed complete on this, on this matrix here, that, you know, it lags. I want to keep putting, this is very important for, you know, generating revenue and the process, the progress going forward, that we keep our foot on the accelerator and bring this forward. And if that, if that means to keep updating the council on this, then that's the way we got to go.
Absolutely. Yeah, as a longstanding member of the city staff here for 20 years, you're absolutely right. One of the reasons that our city manager initiated this process years ago was essentially to separate these items out as key priorities for the city. We're very busy. We're doing things all the time, but we want to make sure that they stand apart as very, very important to the community. So I hear you loud and clear. We can definitely keep those. Can, maybe the, Mr. Smith can help us refine them at this time?
So I suspect it would be provide a progress report, and we should, we would like to do that in the next, what's the reasonable? When do you think we might have three months or just set a six month timeline out? We can beat the, beat the timeline, just make sure it stays on the radar screen.
You know, I'm going to bring the expert up here, and he can.
Before, before it starts, I believe that the first two items, when you say done, that means that like initiate the general plan and then provides the state update, but this is ongoing, so we're still, still going to be coming back to, to report it to us.
So we're going to correct, yes, mayor, we'll wordsmith that to be more relevant to where we are, but prior to wordsmithing it, Ken, can you come up and provide a very brief update?
We can move the done to on target, maybe is, is better where we do it?
Well, and I think, I think understanding where we are right now, at this moment.
Yeah, when you say done, it's kind of confusing. That's why I think the vice mayor think that it's already done, everything done.
Correct. And you bring up a very good point.
Target that it is initiate that.
Yes, mayor. The key word is initiate, and, and perhaps we'll wordsmith that with the help of Mr. Smith. But prior to that, if Ken, you just provide us a very brief update on one and two. All right. Thank you. Welcome, Ken.
Mayor and council, so we are diligently working on the phase two update at this time. We have a consultant de novo. We have been going back and forth with them. We are implementing measures to both change the code and make it easier for anybody, developers, residents, interested parties to use and understand. That is, we are in contact with them constantly and are working to get code text at least refined enough by Q1 of next year. That's not saying it'll be done, but at that point, we should have a completed code that we can start reviewing, and at that point, it's fine tuning, not making major changes.
And on the first one involving the general plan amendments to the, to the areas throughout the city that we've called the mixed use districts?
So for the mixed use districts, the longest, or the biggest hurdle was the environmental impact report. We needed to do an addendum to the existing environmental impact report. That was looking at a six to nine month timeline. The code text itself will be fairly easy to change. We are on track to have that environmental impact report done early Q1, which means we should be able to bring code to council Q1, Q2.
Okay. So can we put that, can we change that so like the mayor says? We need to make sure that we're getting updated on that and.
Provide update on general plan amendments throughout the city instead of the implement portion. And as far as an update, when, when in the new year do you think we're?
For the.
For an update, just to provide an update on both, either one of, on both of these.
I think early Q1 would be a great time to provide just an update. We should have a much clearer picture of where we are in the process and be able to give you more firm timelines based on both where we are with the environmental impact report and where we are with the actual amendment of code.
So February?
January, maybe January, end of January.
End of January, okay.
And when you say update, you update in the city council meeting, right?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
Great, thank you. Okay. Any other questions about those first three objectives? And I appreciate the ongoing point that we don't want these to disappear. Just because they're done doesn't mean that they're forgotten. It just means we're on to the next phase. So any other comments on those first three?
No.
Okay. Next one up is one that is still to be delivered, but it remains on target because it was laid out for June of 2026. And this is to provide a report to the city council on the state of mixed use districts in the city, the key characteristics of a specific plan, and review feedback from the city council on their priorities for potential mixed use districts and prioritize areas that may be subject to a specific plan. Adolfo, do you have any additional commentary you want to make on this?
Very brief. We just talked about the ongoing efforts, right, from a general plan amendment perspective. I know that this council, a few years back, was very focused on specific plans. We actually outlined and created subsets of the specific plans and actually prioritize them. So the June 2026 timeline for this one, as well as the description, is still very accurate, because once we get through the approval, if approved by council, the items that Ken just discussed, we'll be in a better position to come back to you with options, which is essentially the goal here at the very bottom for June 2026. So there's no need to revise neither the description or the timeline on that one.
Okay. Okay. All right. And then, Adolfo, I want to make sure I'm not being redundant with some of the commentary we've already had. So there were two areas identified for staff, that staff identified that should become additional new, either replacement or add on objectives in this area. One was to identify ways to modify the code to be more efficient and improve development. This is not specific to the general plan implementation, but it's new, different effort, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So this was to include assessing the current code and identify gaps or issues to be improved, as well as circulated ideas for the developer, with the developer community. And Adolfo, I'll defer to you to provide some additional color commentary on this particular objective.
Yeah, we, we work with the community, the development community very closely. We've invested in going to ICSC on an annual basis to represent the city and attract larger, larger scale developers to the community. And what we have heard over the years is that the code has been antiquated, that there's areas that need to be refined, and there's just areas that are, appear to be in conflict. So. So, as the city manager says often, as part of good government, we think that this item essentially would benefit anybody who does business at the counter, small developers and large developers, residents alike, to essentially go back and identify ways to modify the city's code to be more efficient and improve development. And like the moderator said, assess the current code and identify gap issues, circulate ideas with the development community on how that refinement should take place.
Do you have any questions for Adolfo on that?
No, that's something, yeah, I agree, we need to address, for sure.
Okay, now, pressure point for you, when, when would you like to bring something back to council for consideration or an update?
When does the last, what's the last window for the next?
Yeah, so theoretically, we're, we have November, December, so we're talking April sometime would be the next six-month window.
I would say before April, let's just pick April as a, as a good time to come in, because that, that is a deep dive into our code and would require, we're actually already working closely with the city attorney on this as we go, on a case by case, so it'll be a deeper dive, so I'd say later in that period would be the best.
Okay, so, well, with council agreement, we'll make that an April 2026 update to you all, which will come back with some specific items of fixes and corrections, and I would assume ultimately would manifest in votes on your opportunity to clean up some of the city code, municipal code. And then, Adolfo, I had another one identified here in a conversation, which was to provide an update on the implementation strategies of the general plan update, but I, is that what we just actually covered, or is this actually something different too as well? Okay.
Different, yeah, I mean, I alluded to a little bit with the general, with the Parks Master Plan, is that a lot of the times, particularly in the past, there would be council action on something and staff was excited to essentially obtain the approval on that council action, but, you know, the devil's in the details, and at the very end of these reports are implementation strategies for us to essentially implement, bring back to council. I, I talked about that being the case with the Parks Master Plan, it's something that was voted on, and we have not brought that back. Again, cleaning up some of the past administration's issues. And one of them that is very dear to me is the general plan update. We invested a million dollars in the general plan update back in 2016, but we were really working on it for, for several years. We, I think the biggest outreach effort in the county, in the city's history took place in 2014, and I just don't feel comfortable right now as a, as a city administrator to be able to say that we have effectively implemented all of the implementation measures of the general plan. So because it is such an important document, we feel that it, it belongs on the matrix, and that it would be a good opportunity, especially with some of the new directors that we have, that were not around in 2016, to be able to take a deep dive into the general plan and essentially make sure that these updates that are part of the action are addressed and brought back to council in a formal manner.
Question on that one, so yes, I agree with what you're saying, but typically, and which we, no fault to anybody in this room, but the general plans are typically updated every 10 years, and we're coming up to the 10-year mark on the general plan. So we haven't gotten to implement what was adopted in 2016, and we're cleaning up some of the things that were kind of missed. So where do, how do, where do we go from there? I mean, if, every, typically every 10 years should be updated?
Yeah, and I don't want to be too leading in my statements, I don't want to make the, make the perception that we have not, that we blown by all of these implementations and measures. I can tell you, you're seeing projects out in the field that I promised you in 2014 that are being built, right? We have other departments that have also done the same thing. This is just really a cleanup of, of all items that were promised. I would say that if we were to have a brand-new general plan, a lot of those implementation measures would still be on the plan. I have to defer to the city manager on what our plans are for an update to the general plan, it's a substantial update, and we're not alone in that. I think a 10-year-old general plan update is not a bad thing, as bad as that sounds, it's actually not a bad thing, it's very common. Anything you'd like to add, city manager?
So there, there are always a different, you know, there's, there's always a thought process when it comes to some of these types of studies, right? Like it sounds, I mean, we've got to do this, but we, we throw out money into these plans and to these, you know, processes, et cetera, and at the end of the day, the implementation is where things get hung up, and, and we know this, some of that is based on the lack of, you know, funding of the past or the lack of direction, and of course, you know, part of, part of it is just, you know, the lack of desire to move along with these and prioritize some of these, you know, implementation practices. So, you know, there, there's a thought that if, and, and doing an update will take a considerable amount of time, you know, as you can tell, and there is a desire to do it, but, you know, given that there's an election out next year, it may just be, it just may be beneficial to wait until the installation of the, the next city council to move forward and let them decide if this is a priority that they want to emphasize, you know, on more so than some of the other priorities that this council has. So it's always about timing, you know, when you've got, when you're too close to an election time, it may, it may change the, you know, it just may change the priorities and the direction of, of what, you know, of what's desired, right? So, that, that's, that's a little bit of where, you know, where, where the thought process is on that. I will, of course, always defer to councils if you want to pursue it, but it is a considerable amount of money and time on top of these other things that we've been trying to do the last few years.
Yes, I understand, it's, I think the last one, it had to have been over, over a year, I mean, to, from start to finish, it's a huge, huge process.
Huge, yeah.
Huge process, it's just, hopefully, you know, obviously, one of these can be the next council that takes this on, but it's just, it's a question about, you know, where does, where do, where do we land on that?
Sure, is it, just to be clear, the, the suggestion is to look back at the old plan and bring you back, essentially a matrix of all the things that were supposed to be implemented, and essentially where we are, specifically focusing on the 2016 adoption. To add a little bit more to what the city manager said, we are on, at the, at the, at a very interesting point, we have a big mall project that may or may not be happening in the near future. We just finished a regional transportation project with 405. We have a lot of land use and zoning on the table right now. I would say not the best time to do it, just from a technical perspective, just getting into the weeds as a technician, not the best time to update our general plan right now, let those pieces settle and then revisit.
All right, all right. Thank you.
So the, I believe, Mayor, I'm hearing consensus that there's a desire to have Adolfo come back with a presentation on an update of the implementation, the strategies from the prior general plan that was adopted? And Adolfo, do you also have a timeline on that? Did you feel comfortable committing to?
That would be, that would be in the new year.
Okay.
January, January.
All right, very good. Okay, let's go on to goal number three, actually, sorry, council members, do you have anything that you would like to add as an objective or area you want to explore? Okay, very good. All right, next up is our third goal, which was to attract, develop, and retain well-qualified staff members. We had one objective under this previously adopted, which was just noting that we need to conclude union negotiations successfully in a way that respects our staff, but also does not destroy the financial future of the city, and provide an initial update to the city council in early 2026. That objective remains in place for February 2026 with on target, so there's no update to offer at that time. So I'll leave that at that unless there's any additional commentary from staff?
I can't see what that says on the second line.
Oh, sorry.
So sorry.
Uh, so, well, the second line I was going to get to in a second, which is the other objective, but the, the first one is if there's any objective or any, any comment about the status on effectively union negotiations?
No, it's still on target for that, so.
Okay, very good. However, in the course of conversation with city staff, we did identify an area, another area that is pertinent to this goal and worthy of your consideration, which is reviewing the part-time wage structure to improve retention and attract qualified candidates for our part-time positions. For this, I'll defer to Christine or Adolfo to offer a comment.
Well, we, so we actually have our wonderful HR director who can shed a little bit of light on this if you need more details, but, but just in summary, our, you know, part-time wages have been set up in a way where they do not have the same structure that the rest of the full-time employees, and essentially they're, they're, they're behind on the curve. We, you know, we adjust our part-time wages to meet minimum wage qualif, you know, minimum wage, the, the minimum wage threshold every, you know, every time there is a minimum wage increase, but that isn't necessarily allowing growth of our part-timers and attracting part-timers. We do have a considerable amount of part-timers because of the nature of the jobs, such as those in public works and those in community services, as well as our police department. And so, Jody can kind of talk about a little bit of the struggles that we've, we've had in retaining and attracting part-timers.
Thank you. So, we recently did a turnover report, and what that basically is, is you analyze how many staff members you have at the beginning of the year versus the end, and you get the turnover, people that leave the city. For our full-time workers, it's about 6%. I've mostly in my career, it's been somewhere between 3 and 6, that's about average. For our part-timers, it, last year it was 19%. So, and there, we assume it's maybe a little bit higher because we didn't count any staff members that may have promoted to a full-time position. So that means that in our office, we're probably spending 20 to 30% of our staff just trying to keep part-time workers. So we looked at cities around us, and most cities are paying their part-timers at the same equivalent wage as full-time, just not giving them the benefits and limiting them to the hours that, under 30 hours of what we're doing. So I, in order to be competitive with surrounding cities, we believe this is something that we should explore and look more into.
Yes, I agree, I, I think it makes perfect sense that, that just because you're part-time, that you should be making it less hourly than a full-time. The job is the same, it's just not full-time, correct? They're still doing the same work, correct?
Yes, so we are still going through all the job descriptions, but I've had some preliminary conversations with directors and supervisors, and the jobs are incredibly similar with very little percentage of difference in the ones that I've checked on so far, and I think those are the ones that are the most used classifications, so, yes, it could be problematic.
And then, I'm assuming, well typically, when you have a turnover, it's costing us time for, to train, and if you keep having a higher turnover at the end, you're costing, you're spending more money training.
Yeah, so absolutely, so when I first got here, I was told that we're sort of the training ground for water techs specifically, we train them, and then they go on to other cities that they can make more money at. So that was something I've heard since day one. But there's also intangible costs, the cost to discuss with the director or the supervisor what exactly you're looking for, the cost to recruit for the position, the cost of interviewing, we do multiple, like for our public works people, we do multiple interviews, oftentimes there's a practical followed by an interview, so, and that can take a couple of months. And then the costs of, you know, maybe certain places, we're not able to actually put our attention because we don't have people in those areas, and then we also come to the training. So you've got unseen HR costs, you've got unseen supervisory training costs, you see parts around the city that, like, let's say with public works, maybe we're not, it's not at the caliber because we don't have part-time staff to help us with those areas. Same with community services, they rely very, very heavily. If we don't have enough rec leaders in the summer, we can't run our summer programs. So it's, 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 it can be, we can bring it down to a number of 19%, but there's a lot of intangibles that, that we have going on here as well.
Thank you.
All right, I have a few follow-up questions for you. First of all, for your department, do you have guidelines or procedures or something like that, so that our employees under your direction, they follow the same procedures, the same guidelines? And especially when you have a turnover, when you bring in somebody new, then you can have this to throw at them and that, to have them look at that before, you can actually holding hands. I just want to follow up the question that he has about the turnover, do you have that in, in place right now?
So, I'm sorry, are you asking me if the recruiting is exactly the same as how we treat our full-timers?
No, the, the guy, yes, the guidelines and then.
Yes, it's, it's exactly the same process, we have a panel, we go through prescribed questions, there's a second interview that generally limit, filters it down to who the final candidate is.
Yeah, my goal is, you know, each department have their, you know, procedures and guidelines, then everyone to go the same, that way we don't step on and doing something differently. And, you know, and help, when we have a turnover, we can always have them, you know, when they come, when we hire new personnel, we have something for them to follow. The second question that I have for you is that, where are you with your current manpower at this time? Is it enough to fulfill what you, or what you needed, or are you, you need additional help?
So I think, I'll answer the second question first, I think we're in good shape. We have two recruiters, though they do do other assignments, so they do split. I think if you ask where we are from a recruiting standpoint today from my staff versus maybe a year or two years ago, I don't think we would have any problems there, so I actually think we're fully staffed. I also, myself, rely on a part-timer who is indispensable in my department. And then, so your first question, I just want to make sure I understand this, are you asking if everybody?
Follow the same process?
Follows the same process, so, yeah, so we, our recruiters guide them through the recruitment process, and then there is an onboarding process. Now, all, not onboarding processes can be the same. Once again, community services is going to be way different than what public works does, but yes, they all then have their own onboarding process that they do after they've completed the steps with us.
All right, congratulations for, thank you. Any question from the council?
Yeah, so, in the near future, will there be a revised salary schedule for the part-timer that you are going to introduce to the council?
Well, I think that's what we're discussing this for, is, I think that's, that kind of rests with you.
Yeah, if there's an interest by the council to dig deeper into our part-time wages and what the financial impacts would look like, we can certainly add that to this matrix and then come back. I, I will say, though, there is a minimum wage increase scheduled for?
Uh, the beginning of the year.
Yeah, beginning of the year, so we may have to present something to the council sooner than later for direction, in order, because regardless, we still have to adopt something for the minimum wage increase anyway, but if there is a desire for council to take a look at a comparison between, you know, matching the wages up to where they should be versus just increasing those that are below minimum wage, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I would be interested in pursuing that.
Absolutely, I can do that.
Yes, for sure.
All right, thank you very much, all right, we can move on.
So, I'll be a stickler, though, for a timeline, which is when do we think we would like to get this done by? Is this something we can finish before that new year kick in with the minimum wage increase? Or?
I'd probably say, it's probably going to be a two-part, it's a two, two-part, two-step.
Two-step process?
It's Monday, it's a two-step process. So I think the first part would just be the, the first part is just looking at, you know, where, what the financial impacts would be, but then, so maybe that would be the first meeting in November, and the second, and, and then the meeting in December would be adoption of a resolution based on what council decides that first meeting in November.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, does that sound well, council members? Excellent, thank you for your insights on that, and thank you for the staff report, that was very helpful. All right, let's move into, are there any additional items you wish to cover in terms of retaining well-qualified staff? Any other objectives you would like to add or discuss with staff while we're here today for this study session?
Not right now.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. So let's go on to our next objective, excuse me, goal area, which is improve customer service delivery to the community. We had previously adopted four objectives in this area, the first two of which we've also delivered on with the staff report, so I will be clear that just because we delivered the staff report doesn't mean we were not committed to ongoing customer service work, so we want to talk about how we deliver that. The objective, the first objective that had been identified was to provide an update to the city council in a study session on the progress of updates in the community development department and review progress on reforms, metrics, and objectives. My understanding is this was presented in a staff report on June 11th with a presentation and staff report, so an update, like the objective was deliver an update, we've delivered an update. And then the second objective that has been completed was to provide an update to the city council on the business licensing process and to note progress on business license issuance and the impacts of the concierge service. And there was a staff report presented in September of 2024 on that, actually, I wonder if that was 24 or 25, pardon me on that, I think it might have been 2025, on that particular concierge service. So before I move forward on those two items, does? So, before I move forward on those two items, does city staff have any comment they wish to make, color commentary on those two?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Smith. So, on the first one, just to provide an update, for several iterations of our council for many years now, community development has been identified as an area that we needed to focus on because obviously it's tied to the vitality of our community. Everybody's biggest investments is property, right? Whether you're a business owner, residential homeowner. So, we, we understood the assignment. The city manager took the bull by the horns several years ago and we worked on an organizational study, which was, thanks to the council for your support on those changes. So, we've implemented some key staffing changes. We've also had some very, very, very good luck that, a lot of credit goes to the city manager for finding these folks that are out there. We've had some retirees that have, that have been our interim community development directors during this, this transition period. And we're extremely happy to have our current interim community development director, Stephen Mendoza, join the city. That being said, I would like the council to, to keep this item or a version of this item on there because it is that important and there are changes that are happening as we speak, particularly on this one, which really focused on providing updates. I think these updates are very important. I think they're important to the community, to the council, and also to our staff members that are within the community development department to know that these metrics are going to be shared with the council in this setting and with the community. So, having said that, I do think that, that it should remain to continue to provide an update on, on the happenings, community development department. As it pertains to the next item, would you like me to go?
Yeah.
Assistant city manager, as far as updates, what, what do you think on timelines for that, every?
It was, it was really, I'm glad you bring that up because there's other items where we're going to have similar discussion, but on this one, I worked very closely with, with our former community development director, Sherry, city manager and I did. And it, it's a heavy lift to bring these reports. I know the chief has wonderful records crew and he brings his quarterlies, he's really good about bringing those at the discretion of the council. We're drawing from a lot of different resources to be able to compile a report, so I would say twice a year would be a reasonable expectation for this report to come back to you.
And so, Adolfo, it is, we lasted this report in June, so are we thinking sometime December, January would be our next viable objective to get that done then?
I think January would be, January, February for the previous six-month period would be a good.
Council members, does that sound good? So, just to be clear, we marked this one done, but we're going to bring it back to life and mark it with a January of 2026 update to you, continue that.
You consensus on that?
Yep. Okay, very good. All right, and then Adolfo, why don't we jump to the second one?
For the second one, it's really tied to the good work of the first one in that business license had lived in the community development department for a very long time and I know the city manager collaborated with the organizational study folks and really it was very clear that this function needed to go to the finance department. So, it is, I would say it will be fully transitioned by the end of this year, that business license will be in the finance department. Our director, Aaron Bax, taking on yet another responsibility. And with her came the business license inspector, Jason Hogan, who is now transitioned over to work directly with Aaron as part of the finance department. This particular item focused a lot on the, on the interactions at the counter, but also a smooth transition, cleaning up the transition to HDL. I feel that we're on point now, we brought a report back to council September twenty-fourth. I know this is something that the mayor is very, very passionate about, is building out the HDL model. And again, it, it's not, it's not the, it's not that business license was outsourced, it's just the clearinghouse for where all of this data is stored and how it's pushed through the process is done through HDL, but it doesn't move with HDL's approval. It comes back to staff, back to the community development department, police department, engineering, all the departments have a hand in it. So, I think we've addressed the mayor's concerns and the council's concerns with the, with the business license process, particularly the concierge service. The concierge service is something that was important to the mayor and the council in that we wanted to make sure that if there are folks out there that are, you know, still functioning on a flip phone, because there are some, trust me, I know some people still holding on to flip phones, that aren't able to upload effectively, easily, that they can come to the counter and they can have that help at the counter. And we've been able to do that, we didn't know what the numbers were going to look like, I think we've had one that has gone fully through the process, others continue to come to the counter and we continue to help them. So, I'm okay with this one, recommending that this one be checked complete, it's obviously at the discretion of the council, if they would like another update at some point.
Yes, I want to comment on that. I appreciate our staff working really hard to complete this project, they put in a lot of effort and as they also identified it or presented on the night twenty-fourth meeting, it's very detailed or edited presentation, so I would appreciate that and I agree with the assistant city manager for that.
Do we have Sharon Kinsen?
From council.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with the mayor and assistant city manager, deem this one, keep it on as done and I know that they've been working really hard on it and, and, yeah, I'm really pleased so far with what I've seen as far as the implementation and hopefully if, if there is any hiccups, that staff would bring those to us, if anything, that needs to be, you know, adjusted for sure.
Any comments from council, as you have seen the report last city council meeting?
I'm just really happy about the business license process that, you know, we implemented. It's bring us to the new age of the internet, so I think it's been really nicely done. Thank you.
Okay.
Very good, so we can close out this and move on.
We'll declare victory. Thank you for the council's support of making that a primary focus and for staff's execution on that, nice to declare victory on that one. The third objective that's identified here was to develop and provide customer service training for all public-facing divisions and department-driven content that meets the needs of specific departments and/or the context of their role at the city. And we have this down as a revised, we've been doing training by department, but there's not a citywide training yet and I'm not sure if you want HR to comment on this or if Adolfo, you have some comments, or Christine?
So, before we can actually do a comprehensive overarching customer-first service training, we felt that in evaluating each department's needs and the, what's, what some of the focus needed to be placed on in each individual department, we felt like that was the way to go, so we've been focusing just on individual departments first. And when we get to a point that we're more comfortable with being able to provide an overarching, you know, training, then that would be appropriate. But right now, we've really just focused on specific needs of individual departments to provide, to provide good customer service, knowing that we do have expectations of, of clear communicative customer service.
Can you also further explain what you, you have identified here as revised? What you have been revised, what, what are the revisions on this? And also, the deadline is October twenty-twenty-five. Do we, are you planning to get that in?
At some point when we are comfortable with the individual customer service training, because we've, we've heard loud and clear from the council over the past few years about certain deficiencies in customer service as it relates to whether it's counter, you know, whether it's counterinteractions, phone interactions, email interactions, and it varies among different departments. And so, we've allowed the departments and working with the departments to figure out the individual needs first. So, at some point, yes, it would be nice to have a, a customer service training for all that's a little bit more, that's, it's structured probably in outside, you know, somebody like Ryder coming in and, and, and providing some more, you know, extensive training, but we're trying to get through the basics first is what I'm trying to say with each department, so.
So, is it still a target date for the end of October?
There's, there's, well, it wouldn't, it's, it wouldn't, it's not a target for the end of October, but we can certainly continue to keep that on the matrix and target it within the next six months.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we'll make that an April date and we'll make sure we provide an update, if not before then, then certainly by the next time we find ourselves in this room discussing a status on this project. The next one that was identified is also on target, but?
Before you move to the next one, is council have any question on this?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah. So, the next one we identified is actually still to come, it's a December twenty-twenty-five date, which is to review and update flow charts and, excuse me a second, development customer service orientation or oriented materials that better informs developers and residents on the community development department, work progress, process, excuse me, and how city departments can best partner with the city on development projects. So, I know that these processes are being revised on a case-by-case basis as, as we're working through those. I think, Adolfo, you have some comments to make on this?
Very brief, we, as, as part of the original org study and really bringing on these key staff members, a lot of credit goes to the former interim community development directors, got to give a lot of credit to Ken, who's our principal planner, as well as Stephanie, who's our contract senior planner, they really have been focused on this. They are still in the process of developing and refining some of these flow charts and with the arrival of our new interim community development director, who's worked at cities all across Southern California for over thirty years and also has a lot of experience in working with culturally diverse communities, we definitely would like him to be, he is going to be very involved in this process, so we would not be hitting the December twenty-twenty-five deadline or timeline or status. We would definitely be pushing that towards the end of the next reporting cycle, which my understanding is April.
Yeah, so we'd be looking at March or April, I suspect.
Correct.
I can also vouch for the fact that you have a rock star interim too, having worked with Stephen in Santa Ana, he was brilliant. So, council members, do you have any concerns, questions for Adolfo on this or concerns about shifting us to a March or April timeline to deliver this to you?
Any question from?
I'm good with that, but I just have a question as far as, give me an example of something, when you say flow charts or customer service oriented materials, forgive me if I, if it's, if I'm asking a question that I should know, but, but that can, can be considered, like I see in other cities, when somebody wants to build an ADU, for example, we have something that gives them, they, they can look at, say, set shows setbacks and all that, is that something that we already have or something that's going to be done?
So, those are, those are a really project-specific examples, so what you just described, we do have and we can hand them that, right? And then they can look at how to design an ADU on their property. But when we talk about the flow charts, we really are focused on when you're having that conversation at the counter or maybe before a developer comes to the city and they want to understand any process, it's easier for them to digest it if it's in the form of a flow chart with some timelines. So, I know that we've been doing this at the counter with Ken and Stephanie since their arrival, we're there, walking up to the counter with essentially a, a step-by-step and they're, they're able to tell an applicant, you are here, the next step is this, and then when they walk away with it, they walk away with something that everybody saw at the same time, they're not taking scribble notes or trying to remember what they're hearing.
I see.
And these exist in other cities, why they have not been implemented here, you know, twenty years ago, I can't answer that, I just know that we're working on it now.
All right, thank you.
Just to add to that too, you know, community development, they've, they've done a, a great job trying to advance some of these priorities. They are in the process of, of hiring a management analyst. You know, there are a few key positions that are in that department that would certainly help with, you know, with the design and creation of some of these flow charts and other materials. So, we're in the process of hiring those positions and hopefully that will help with that administrative support for our current staff.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. All right, and then, so I want to, two additional suggestions that staff have made as follow-ups. One is a suggestion to identify, Christine alluded to this, identify a facilitator to conduct a citywide customer service training for all public-facing divisions, so this would be a new objective to add and it's designed for more general customer service training as opposed to specific department-by-department. As was noted, there's been a lowering curve in focus in certain departments, but this would be an objective to bring, bring back an option in the future. I suspect our timeline on this is to still get through some of the work that's identified in the prior objective, so we are probably several months away from doing this. Is that your consensus, Christine, too? So, I would put like a March date on this to come back and this is just supplemental, additional citywide customer service training in addition to the department-by-department work that's going on. Is there any objection or concern with that?
No, that sounds good.
Okay, we'll make that a March objective. And then the last one that has been suggested by city staff was to review progress on customer service training and track, actually, we just talked about this a little bit already, I think. So, we had identified March of twenty-twenty-six to bring back some metrics and data on that. Is there some comment on that, Adolfo, around that customer service training or?
I know, I think we've covered it.
We've covered that territory, okay. We feel good about that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. This is going to bring us to our last goal area, actually, sorry, again, council members, I apologize, I'm just trying to move us through. Do you council members have any additional feedback on customer service training or other customer service areas that you would like to explore, discuss for objections, objectives for the city?
Something, I understand that we're public-facing customer service, also, part of that training should be, I don't know, I'll, I'll keep this, never mind, never mind, never mind.
Okay. We'll explore that offline in six months from now, we can bring it up.
Yeah, never mind.
Okay, nothing else, council?
My understanding, are you on the third goal here, enhance quality of life and beautification throughout the, the city?
We are about ready to start that.
Oh, you are about to start that?
Yeah, we're about ready to start that. Okay, so hearing no additional objectives being suggested by council, I'll go to our final goal area, which is enhance quality of life and beautification throughout the city. We have, let's start with the one that has been identified as done, which is to provide an update to the city council on the, so this is second line item on there under the objectives, which is provide an update to the city council on the code enforcement process, including metrics and geolocation data on steps taken to be more proactive. So, we did provide a staff report in September, on September twenty-fourth to the city council about this particular item and I want to know if there's any questions you have about this item or any follow-up you would like to discuss about it?
Yes, for that particular item on the, on the code enforcement, I would, or code enforcement manager, or I should say a rock star code enforcement manager, I think he's doing an awesome job, but I think that's something that I would like to continue with those updates and maybe, I don't know, maybe twice a year, it's something that I would like to see continue. I don't know, that's just me, but I would like to see that, I think it's great for the, for the community to see that, what our code enforcement department is doing and what, what they're accomplishing. So, I would like to see that at least twice a year.
Yeah, I, I agree with Vice Mayor Menzo, as far as enhance quality of life and beautify our city, it's this continuous process that we need to go on. So, it is ongoing item that we, we have to look at. So, I appreciate the code enforcement. At the same time, I have a lot of people talking to me about the, you know, restricted code enforcement, so we, we need to talk a little bit about that too. You know, I know that, I mentioned this at the last meeting, I, I will say it again, that we have the, you know, we are here to help them, not to, you know, try to, you know, push pressure on them, however, we need to do according to our policies and rules, I understand that, but try your best, whatever you can, to help our resident so that they can, you know, peacefully, you know, live their lives. And at the same time, we need to make sure that our city look beautiful compared to our other city neighborhood. So, yes, it's ongoing and I ask for report, you know, updates every, at least every quarter if possible.
Okay, and before I move on, council member Newwin, would you concur with this as well as to get an update on that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then I'll turn to Adolfo or maybe your code enforcement officer, viability about reporting back timelines, I heard twice a year, so every six months effectively?
I heard twice a year and quarterly, is what I heard.
Oh, okay.
So, I would, I would say, and again, to speak on, on the matter, definitely not taking credit for it, Sergio's done an amazing job of essentially bringing code enforcement to where it's always needed to be, right? Very data-driven, that's something that's very important to city manager and to the council. So, having said that, I want to thank Sergio for all his hard work and the council for their patience. There was a huge lift on gathering that information and bringing it to council, as I worked with Sergio on that as well as our new interim community development director did as well. as I worked with Sergio on that, as well as our new interim community development director did as well. I would say twice a year would be an appropriate amount of times to come. It just took a long time to generate the data, so thank you to the mayor to support us on that.
Yeah, I'll support that.
Okay.
So if, if I could add to that, actually, much like we do our crime reporting and our homeless stats, et cetera, if there's just a desire for council to bring homeless, I'm sorry, code enforcement updates twice a year, we can do that independently and not have it included in the strategic plan. And we'll just make it a part of our normal routine.
Yeah.
Yes, I believe.
Whichever way.
I believe that I, I did request to have our homeless update quarterly and also the public safety update quarterly, right? That's already ongoing.
Yes.
So in, this, this can be, the code enforcement can be scattered out to, you know, have, you know, twice a year, definitely.
Yes.
So Christine, with that suggestion, we would actually take it off here?
You can just take it off.
And we'll, council, you'll hold us to account that we report back on it independent of it being me standing in front of you talking about this, very well.
So that'd just be part of our, our policy to have a twice a year update, all right?
Okay, and Christine, re-trust. All right, so then we have two additional objectives we identified that are marked as a revised status. So the first of these, is the first one listed, spark and engage community pride in city partners, i.e., excuse me one second, M C S D, school districts, county, to support beautification efforts, identify new opportunities for partnership with these agencies by initiating discussions. So I think Christine, I'll turn it over to you to comment on that. I know there's been some, some discussions.
Yeah, so these are, these are general discussions that various staff members or department heads have had with certain entities, depending on what, what the, you know, what the effort is. For example, I know Vanessa's very engaged with our school district when it comes to, into their involvement. And obviously, as you can tell, some of the events that we have, this last fall festival we had, there was a lot of community participation with the school districts there. M C S D is a wonderful partner. I know Jake and his team regularly engage with them as well, you know, for different events. They've had several joint, like been, like cleanup events, I was gonna say bin events, but no, cleanup events throughout the year. So the, you know, the discussions are, they are ongoing. And so there's not really a, there's not really a, a particular checkpoint, if you will. So we did spark and engage by that timeline, but, but as far as coming with something tangible, we, we don't have, you know, we don't have a particular item or thing to present.
So I think my suggestion would be is, I know you'll have those ongoing dialogues. Six months from now, we could probably have another opportunity to provide an update to council on that. I would suggest we just identify April twenty twenty six as an update and we'll modify this language to reflect an update to you. And clearly, if something comes up more substantial, I'm sure your city manager will update you accordingly. But these relationships are long term, it's gonna take some time to bring the partnerships together on some of them.
All right.
Make sense?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other one that is also noted as revised is take steps towards city beautification to improve quality of life and attract businesses and developers. Utility box art, street art, encourage residential investments in public facing yards, support resident educational materials on guidelines for plantings and design, and provide an update to city council on options for beautification programs and opportunities. Who, I think one staff member was gonna make a comment on this, I'll send it to.
So, yeah, so taking steps for city beautification. So obviously, whenever we are discussing with developers as they're coming into the city, we are making recommendations on, you know, on obviously certain design standards, if you will, for how they can, how they can help beautify, you know, our city in general with their project. Our cultural arts commission is probably the most active of, of the, the, of the different groups that are moving towards city beautification. I know we have an item coming up on the agenda for the adopt a part program. It's something that is going to help with beautification as well. Residential or educational materials, rather, on guidelines, that's something that is part of, a little bit of part of what we had discussed in the, in the other objective with customer service oriented materials. And so that kind of goes hand in hand as well. So there are these ongoing efforts that little by little are trying to build to, you know, to, to results that we can see, tangible results, websites updated. But, you know, but certainly it is an ongoing effort in general. So there's not a particular timeframe unless there are certain things that we want to, you know, to, to, to take out and focus on directly.
So I think that surfaces two points. One is similar to the prior objective I just discussed, we could just identify this as an April twenty twenty six and we will provide a further update to you then, knowing it's ongoing. Number two, as Christine just alluded to, if there's any specific element within this that you'd like to call out with some timelines, that's a particular objective, then we'd love to hear about that and we could tackle that directly or put a timeline to it.
I have something. I think I've maybe spoken this to assistant city manager about this. And then you tell me how do we get this done or if the council agrees. For new developments that come to our city, as far as like mandating our, our component to a new development, I see some of our new developments, most recent was, was Mr. Crossing that has an art concept on the front there. How do we get that into our municipal code to require an art, you know, concept on a new development? How do, how do we go about that?
You know, for, for the project you just described, I was a part of the development of that project, so I know how that came to be. It was an ask and not a requirement. So I, I would need some help from the city attorney to help me understand how we could make that something that is required from developers. Definitely, every city does it slightly different, so we come back with some options for you to consider.
Yeah, but then also the one we just heard not too long ago at the mall, the true, true life or true?
True life.
Yeah, they had, they had one on their plans and that was just their, they wanted to.
Correct.
But is there a way that we can do that?
It's, it's very common, and I'll turn it over to you, Scott, but it's very common for that art component to kind of, as the project's being developed, to, to go through the cultural arts commission. So there, I've seen it done that way. I've been a part of projects when I was in private sector where that's the way it happened. Do you have anything else to add to that?
So it's in cities that do have a requirement, such as, for example, the city of Culver City. I bring them up because there's a court case involving them. They had a, an art in public places fee, essentially. So in lieu of, so it's either if you are, if you meet certain thresholds, you know, if your project is more than X number of square feet or whatever, then you have to provide some sort of public art. In lieu of that, you can pay a fee. So that's a typical way that cities do it. Certainly, there are other ways that we can look into, but that's a pretty standard way of doing it.
And the other way is just to, you know, request, I mean, the other, I mean, that's the non-binding kind of nice way of going about it.
Correct.
Well, is there something that we can maybe just bring us back information about?
Right, and, and there's a number of different things other than just requiring developers to do it. I mean, we've talked about art beautification, like it's common that a lot of cities will have utility box programs and like city of Costa Mesa, I'm sure you're familiar with that one, they've got a program that they put art on those utility boxes. There are a number of programs that cities can set up along those lines.
Yeah, no, that's on here, but I was just asking about new developments. So maybe just some information you can let us, bring to us as far as what's, if this was something, like what would be the best way to go about it?
We can do that.
So, I, I just want to check with your fellow council members too about consensus and thoughts on this. Do you have an interest in this area as well?
I do.
Yes?
Information.
And mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so I think what, to your point for information, what I'm hearing is some, like what we've had previously, come back with a report at some point in the next few months. I would ask that we have the latitude to figure out how in the next six months this might happen, to come back with you all with kind of options and policy choices that you could consider as like a staff report. Does that make sense, Adolfo?
That's correct, and just to be clear, I know you've been very patient, Vice Mayor, on the utility box art and opportunities for street art. I know particularly opportunity on the new bridges that were funded through the four oh five project. Is that, are you grouping those in together?
If, if the time, depending on staff and time, I don't know.
I think it, it makes a lot of sense to do so. I think we have a lot more control over, obviously, public streets than we do over private. And private's gonna depend on when development comes through. So we could definitely bring you back a report on both of those. Good news, we are gonna be bringing to council a substantial, for the council to accept a substantial amount of money from O C T A to close out the project. And within that large sum of money, we've tracked it and had allocated money for this art component along the bridges. So it's very timely that you're bringing that up.
Yes, because I, I see the other cities that had the new bridges, they already have their art component on their bridges, Fountain Valley, Costa Mesa, Huntington Beach, and ours, we, we don't.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's something that we need to, I mean, is that, that's something that should already be in the works, no?
It actually is not begun, but we know where we want to go. The tile options that some of the cities went with at the time, we weren't too excited about what the tile options would look like in Westminster. And as the city manager, we'll, we'll talk in a little bit about like the identity that we've been lacking as a community for many years. Rather than tie us down to the All America logo, which is one of the options, right? So you can thank me for that one. I did not allow that to move forward, but rather allocate money to be able to appropriately place art on the bridges. So we are, we're in a good spot because we actually have the money in our pockets once council approves the, the closing of the cooperative agreement for the four oh five.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll add an objective to return back in the next six months, maybe find a date sooner, to provision out some policy options on public art. Okay, and then there were some additional suggestions that have been made by your staff experts for your consideration today. The first one is to develop and implement a citywide design standards to create a unified look and feel for buildings, signage and public spaces. And I think, Adolfo, you could take, make comment on this?
You know, I want to turn that over to the city manager.
Great.
He's our visionary on that, so.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily call it a visionary, but, you know, one of, one of the, one of the disappointing things about our city is we have so much character and so much, you know, so much to offer that a lot of times when people are coming through our city, they are not, yeah, so those, those lines are actually not on your, they're not on mine either, which is why I'm squinting with my glasses.
I can't, I just see blur.
Yeah, so I, I'll try to.
Does that help a little bit?
That is much better, there we go. So, so when people drive through Westminster, it feels like a pass through, right? Sometimes people don't know when Stanton ends or starts, where Westminster ends or starts. And the next thing you know, you blink and you're in Huntington Beach, right? And one of the, you know, one of the concerns that I've heard over time, being here for almost ten years, is that the city does not have an identity. And you drive here, you don't know where your border is, you don't know, we blend with Garden Grove sometimes and on the other side, again, blending with, with Fountain Valley, Huntington Beach. And so it would be, you know, it, it, in order to help with the beautification process, in order to help build our identity, it would be beneficial for us to develop and implement citywide design standards so that we have a look and feel for, you know, for our buildings or signage, et cetera. We have a mosh, you know, just a, a hodgepodge of different looks. We've got some old English buildings, we've got our clock tower over here, which is very representative of the, you know, the Westminster and, and, you know, Westminster, England. And then on the other side of town, you've got this, you know, you've got, you, you've got the little Saigon area, for example, which has its own identity and, and, you know, the residential areas in, in districts one and two, for example. There's not really a, a look or feel as you're coming in. So this would just help clean that effort up and create just an identity for our city.
Yes, no, I agree. I'm, I'm, one of the things I've always questioned is that we have a, a design standard for a sec segment, which is, I guess, Beach Boulevard, the civic center, that's on our, on our design pla, design guide manual. But that manual wasn't, I don't think anybody even knows that thing exists because there's some developments that have happened that, in, in that area that didn't comply with that design, which I don't know how, maybe that's in the past, you know, and a planning department didn't hold them to that. So, I mean, it's something that we need to definitely do. And if that design guide manual is not being, you know, being, make sure that that, the requirements are met, then we need to do something. If that design is not desired anymore, if we're not Westminster no more and if we want to stay with the old English look, I mean, is that something? I mean, I think, I personally think it's where Westminster, unless we change our name, you know. If you're gonna be called Westminster, you should kind of, kind of have an area that looks like Westminster. So if we're gonna have that in our manual, I don't know why we're not, when those particular projects were, you know, awarded, why didn't that, why wasn't the design guide manual looked at and, and we coined?
And this is gonna be, yeah.
So yes, I agree with you. So yes.
Yeah, this is gonna be a multi, yeah, this is gonna be a multi-step process to, you know, to begin with as well because part of it is gonna be, you know, obviously, part of it is gonna be gauging, you know, use the council, what, what you would like to see. There may be interest, you know, by this council to see what the community would like to see as well for the, the look of Westminster. And, you know, implementation can be several steps. So if you want to focus on, if you want to focus on just the public spaces first versus, you know, the signage, I know I heard over the years, wayfinding signs, right? That's something that's been beaten around so many times and yet we don't have that, right? But at the same time, if we were gonna put wayfinding signs, we don't really know what it's gonna look like. We're just gonna continue to use the same ugly green signs that we have and, and, but is that really indicative of what the council and the community wants to see? So I think with this particular goal, probably the first step, if we really want to break it down, we're gonna have to look into, you know, these types of things would be, it, it would be beneficial for a consultant because unfortunately, there are processes that we just do not have the bandwidth capacity or necessarily experience to do. And so I would say, you know, probably be reaching out to a few consultants and see what would be the best step, right?
Yes, and, and you, I was just thinking about it before you said it, was those things and, you know, and since, since the city manager knows that, that's a big thorn in my side and a big pain in my behind because those green signs are on our major materials, it's like, who thought of, that's a freeway sign. We need to have something like, you see other cities, they have a nice wayfinding design signs that have an, you know, either a logo or something that says you're in that particular city. Here in Westminster, we don't have that. I guess our city is one big freeway, I guess, because that's all we have is just freeway signs everywhere.
I think there's one on freeway four oh five, we, I saw the logo to see that Westminster is on the billboard there. I think that's, that's the one I see, the only one I see, I think.
Yeah.
Right.
So yes, wayfinding signs is something that we definitely need to do. For, yes, I'm in agreement a hundred percent with this, this new item here.
Could I, just a clarifying question, Christine, too? Because the language here can get a little confusing in our local government world. When we are talking design standards, this is not about building design standards for other buildings. This is about design standards for our buildings, our infrastructure as a city, correct?
Well, so that's, yes, so yes, because the, the other discussion that we had earlier about how could we, you know, encourage other folks to create buildings that are, you know, that, that you have standards, like that's a separate conversation.
Yes.
So this is really about us, our looking field, it's our identity, essentially, yes.
Okay, so consensus, council, you agree with this? I saw, okay, we'll make this an objective. And then Christine, do you have some thoughts on timeline here? Do we want to buy ourselves as much runway as possible and give us six months?
Yes, I, I would say that I'd like to buy a little bit more time on this one only because once we get a point of, you know, of a consultant, it's that, the, the secondary part is gonna take a lot longer, obviously. So I would say probably, I'd go March on this one only because we've, we've added a lot of priorities to January, February, and we're gonna be in tep parade mode in February. So all we're doing is eating, breathing, living tep parade during that month. Want to just at least, does that work for the council, just managing expectations?
Yeah, you said March, April.
Probably March.
It probably won't be an award contract. We'll do it similar to what we did with the economic development strategic plan where we brought you what a potential. the Economic Development Strategic Plan, where we brought you what a potential scope of services would look like and walked through it with you, prior to going out to the public, private sector and getting quotes.
Okay, so March would be to bring kind of RFP specs and scopes to the council?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then the next one is revisit the city's mission, vision, and values, I'll just say that's near and dear to my heart when we're doing strategic planning processes, and, and launch a rebranding effort, so logo, identity, messaging, to strengthen our unified identity. So this is somewhat connected to the prior discussion, and I'll defer to Christine to, or visionary Christine to comment on that too.
Sure, so at the last, when we had our last strategic planning workshop, there was some interest in taking a look at the city's mission, vision, and values, because of the fact that, you know, those, those were, those were set a long time ago, and it's not to say that the mission, vision, and values are not valid, but there may be a desire for, you know, the council and the community to, to modernize it and make it more fitting to what the current community is like, and what the, you know, what your expectations are for the city. So revisiting it is not a bad idea, but that also ties into the second part, which is launching a rebranding effort, logo, identity, messaging, because it, it ties in with the unified identity, so now we've talked about the physical, you know, the physical attributes, buildings, signs, et cetera, now we really want to, want to bring out some of these, you know, these, these different components, so we can show what, you know, what, what is Westminster, right? So we've had the logo for a while, there's still documents that use All America City, is that truly what Westminster's identity is? Where Westminster is always changing and evolving, and, you know, it, we've, we haven't had an opportunity to evaluate logo, identity, and messaging that I'm aware of, and so this might be an opportunity for the council to really, to really look into, you know, how, how you want, you know, how you want Westminster to be perceived, and how we can portray that out and, and show the world that we are Westminster, California. So this would probably require, you know, also a consultant, a different kind of consultant from the, you know, from the first one, the first one in, in developing and implementation of citywide design is more, you know, it's more design standards in, in a way, but this one is really more about, it's not just graphic design, but it's taking, you know, taking ideas and putting it into art.
Questions on, for Christine on this?
No, I'm, yes, I think this is in conjunction with the first one, and yes, I agree, let's get it done.
Mayor?
Very lofty goal.
Okay. All right, I assume somewhere, there might be some interesting timing questions between this and the other objective, Christine, so.
So this one, I think, could actually, we could, so without reinventing the wheel, so, you know, we have a Little Saigon grant that we, you know, that, that we have some of these different components that are focused specifically on Little Saigon, it's just about the, you know, that Little Saigon effort is grant related, so it doesn't have anything to do with this, but I feel that we could confidently take some of the components of that as far as scoping and, and, you know, documentation, to be able to get this out further than the, than, than the other consultants. So I'd probably say this one, January, this January would probably be a better timeline for revisiting the city's mission and rebranding effort.
And to be clear, the mission, vision, values, that would be a conversation with council in a facilitated discussion, typically that's your vision.
It's generally, yes, the city's mission, vision, and values is generally a facilitated discussion so that it doesn't go sideways.
Okay, okay, very good, so I have consensus on this, and it sounds like January's an our outside date, if not some steps in the interim? Okay, all right, and then last item that has been surfaced here, it came up previously, was provide an update on the status at the Parks Master Plan. Is that Adolfo, do you want to provide a comment on that?
Provide an update on that one, I should have probably ended on the previous one, since it's a visionary one, this one's more in the weeds, but the Parks Master Plan, so we are severely park poor in the community, and I do want to thank the efforts of our council for providing us the opportunity to improve the parks that we do have. I think, it seems like we get together all the time at a park, and we're always doing ribbon cuttings, and the community loves it, and we have really, really good, high-quality parks that have gone, we've come a long way from where our parks look like prior to this council. So having said that, when it comes to these types of studies like a Parks Master Plan, we talked about other studies that were just adopted and maybe not followed through as, as effectively as they should have, this is one that actually has moved along pretty well. So the question to the council is, would you like to, we, we feel that we would like to, we, we would like to provide you an update on the Parks Master Plan, since we've done a lot of work on it, separate to the fees that was discussed earlier, just essentially, this is the vision that was adopted as part of the Parks Master Plan, this is all that we've done, all the good stuff we've done, and our, and then the decision point, once we provide that research and to the council would be, is it time to revise the Parks Master Plan now that we've done so much work on it, like what is the next, you know, 20 years of parks look like?
Yes.
The answer is yes, we would like to.
Yes, I, I agree, it's definitely, since when was it developed, do you remember?
Director Johnson can probably answer that question.
It's been at least more than eight years ago, right?
Yeah, if I were to guess, more, more than six, less than eight maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
How long?
It was adopted by council in March of 2020.
Oh, not that long, it seemed longer.
11th, I believe.
Wow, all right, yes, let's, yes.
Particularly with the infusion of COVID funds and the dedication of our staff, Vanessa's and, and director No have, from Public Works, they've done outreach, they've designed and built a lot of the projects that we've seen built over the last, you know, four or five years, so we've done quite a dent in a good way on that plan, so what does it look like? We'd like to bring you back that update.
For sure, if I can add to that, so, so yes, I don't want to, well, let's finish this one, then I'll, and I'll bring mine.
Should she stay up there? Just kidding.
Uh, no, I just, let's just, let's finish this one.
So I guess my following question is, how much time do you need to prepare, and where do we see this falling in our timeline?
That one we could, I would say, I would say January, because I know February is such a busy month.
Okay, pre-tet. Okay, that gets us through the objectives that were identified by staff that they want to surface for you, I appreciate your, I know staff appreciates your support for those concepts. What else, council members, would you like to, and mayor, would you like to discuss, surface here for other objectives?
If I can piggyback on, on, on that one there, and I don't know if this is its own or, or part of, part of, and I know the city manager and has spoken about this in the past, but I would like to, if council would be supportive to make sure that this gets implemented, is a facilities master plan as far as scheduling, I want this with her leadership, that we need to adopt one, that's something that we, I think we're desperately missing, there's no plan set where things are being, you know, as far as maintenance is concerned, so that's something that I think we need to do, city manager, and how do we accomplish that?
Yes, you're absolutely right, so, and, and I could bring director No up here to speak on that a little bit, we've had discussions about moving forward with facilities master plan, and there is, he's got some quotes for an RFP, and if you want to update us on where we are on that process?
Yes, we are working on putting together the RFP, and we plan to put it out probably next month, and, and we also have other RFP we have to put out, but hopefully we can put it out next month and maybe bring it back to the council to select the consultant, I would say January of 2026.
And, and do you know kind of what the scope is on that?
Yeah, the scope going to be evaluate or assess all the city-owned buildings, and then build a program that will, you know, have auto recommendation as well as the costs, and then, you know, it's just, it's just a plan for the city, you know, how many years we can accomplish to, basically to improve all the equipment.
And, and on that, would it have like a, a timeline as far as like maintenance is concerned?
Correct, it based also based on the city funding as well, that will have the timeline that, how many, you know, how many items will be improved or, or maintenance, maintained every year.
Okay, so that's not something we need to put on, on this as a goal? No?
You don't need, you don't need to, it's already in motion, but there may be, there may be at, at a point after, you know, after the six months, when we get to the next six months strategic plan, knowing what the next steps are with the facilities master plan, that you might, you know, there may be some objectives that you can pull based on the facilities master plan at that time. So right now, we're just going through scoping, the RFP process, et cetera, but, you know, maybe in, in April, when we come back and meet again, based on what you know on, on that master plan, you can set some objectives.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you for that ask. Any other questions from the council or objectives that you would like to raise under this category?
Any question?
Does the remodeling of all the expansion of the city hall part of the facility master plan?
No, that, that is no, that is not, so with the facilities master plan, it's really looking at all existing city-owned buildings, and looking at, you know, depreciation, looking at, you know, the, the life of the buildings, the structure, et cetera, but if there is, yes, it does not include any expansion of buildings, that, that's a completely different conversation if council's interested.
Never mind.
Any question from vice mayor?
No.
All right, so on behalf of the city, city council, city staff, would like to thank you, you and your staff for being here this morning, and then present us the updates for all of the items that we, you know, planned, and I, I think it's, we appreciate you very much for that, and we continue to work with you on that.
Thank you, honor. It's a pleasure being here.
With that, I, I want to congratulate every one of us here for the task well done, I mean, for the successful productive meeting, at one point, I was thinking that, you know, we need to, I don't want to keep you hostage here between the vice mayor and also the council member, but we were able to, to move on, thanks to the vice mayor to, to take, take on and, and, you know, and endure the disrupt, the disruption if any, so that we can continue this, this meeting, and indeed, it was a successful meeting, we still have a lot of works in front of us, and we'll need to move on. So once again, thank you and congratulate for the job well done, and thank you everyone for attending this meeting. The next meeting is going to be a regular meeting on Wednesday, October 15, at 6:00 PM, here, right here at the council chamber meeting, we, we are now back to the council meeting in the council chambers. So once again, thank you very much, thank you to everyone, on behalf, on behalf of the resident, you are here to give your input, so again, thank you everyone, thank you staff for being here and give your, provide your input, thank you council member, thanks, and we'll see you next Wednesday at 6:00, thank you.
Thank you.